All right, we appreciate seeing everybody here tonight. This is Monday, January twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen. It's four thirty P M. and we're in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. This is a work session tonight, so if you have not been invited, you've not been invited tonight, so see you back next week. All right, we've got Police of the Year Sergeant William Van Vertlo. We're recognizing him next week. Two Mayor's Award winners for next week. It's gonna be exciting, so if you can't come down, make sure you tune in. Number three is a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter one twenty-eight, tree service business of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. First reading on that. What's your name on that? Mr. Tissler?
Do you wanna do both at the same time? One fifty-one or one twenty-eight?
These are kinda in conjunction with the Tree Advisory Board, kinda review, and our staff looking at our codes associated with trees. The first one, one twenty-eight tree service business, just updating that primarily to have a more uniform safety standard. This is the American National Standards Institute, the ANC, Z one-three-three-point-one safety standards. This just outlines the procedures and recommendations to make the occupation and activity of tree workers safer. The Parks and Forestry staff did meet with the clerk on our application for tree service businesses, and there's a couple changes they wanna make there, so maybe a couple other minor modifications to this code we'll have in the packet for Monday, but those just primarily apply to the actual application. So anyone that does work on any tree in the City of Burlington, whether it's private or public, is required to be licensed tree service business.
Counsel? Makes sense to me.
Yep, no questions.
The second one, Chapter one fifty-one, again, ANC A three hundred, the ANC is American National Standards Institute, so just trying to have our codes reference a more national standard for tree pruning. So this is a recognized standard for tree and plant healthcare nationally, so we're just referencing that instead of saying, "Tree pruning shall be in a manner that does not harm trees," which is very vague. This at least gives some guidance through a national standard, so just a minor change there.
All right, because we love our trees. You guys good?
Absolutely.
Number five is a public hearing, consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand nineteen Aspen and Dill reconstruction. Jesse?
Okay, I'm Jesse Howe, city engineer. I'll be talking to you guys a little bit tonight about the Aspen and Dill project we have coming up. I have a few slides, project background on this. We're gonna be doing full-depth replacement on Aspen and Dill. The road's about fifty years old and it's pretty poor condition. Basically, it's beyond the point where an HMA overlay is gonna be effective, so we're replacing with concrete. Existing sidewalks will be brought up ADA standards at the crossings, per usual, and we are adding some storm sewer infrastructure. Not close enough? I was wondering. Okay. Better?
Good.
A little too loud, yeah. But anyway, we'll be adding some storm sewer to Aspen Drive on the south end of it there. So Aspen Avenue.
How much storm sewer are you gonna add?
It's basically from the intersection of Dill and Aspen down to Sequoia. So I don't remember the exact millennial foot. Off the top of my head, it's maybe about four or five hundred.
Are we gonna change the width of this road at all? And the reason I ask is, we've got a lot of lots that have just been purchased and are in the process of being developed around that area. Are we taking that development into consideration when we're doing this?
Right now, the road is thirty-one foot wide, which is wide enough to be considered a collector street, so, you know, even, you know, in the event that everything connects and one of these becomes a through collector, they're wide enough to meet those standards.
The question would be though, Matt, that's a great point. The question would be though, is we just went through this on Madison.
Correct.
Being thirty-one foot, you know, would we be able to have parking on both sides? Is there parking on Dill now?
Madison was thirty feet.
Thirty feet, okay.
And the standards is actually right at thirty-one.
Thirty-one, okay. I just wanna make sure we don't have another one of those.
Yep. Some of the project considerations on this, we do have several dead ends, so with that taken into account, we did a few things to try to minimize the inconvenience of this replacement, since we do have, you know, a substantial amount of houses at the end of each drive. The first thing we were going to do is we're in the process of purchasing right-of-way to extend Sequoia to meet up with the south end of Aspen, as you can see there. That's gonna be Phase one. That will just alleviate and give people a place to park when we start doing the subsequent phases. The, as I said, we'll be breaking it into five phases so that people don't have to walk as far to get to their houses, and we don't have to haul trash bins and mail quite as far. We'll have temporary setups for all of that. We're in the process of scheduling a meeting with residents to kinda let them know what to expect out of the project, and at that meeting, they'll have the opportunity to sign up for like text message and email alerts that we'll be putting out as we progress through everything, so everybody should be pretty well informed and have a chance to express any concerns they might have. Traffic control, we are planning to do the Willow and Dill intersection in two different phases. If you look here, what we're planning on doing is reducing it to one lane for two separate phases of it. Right now, those are planned to be Phases four and five, but when school lets out, we'll probably accelerate these two. Say if they're just finishing Phase two, we're gonna jump to these two, so hopefully we can get them both completed while school's out and we don't have that, you know, additional congestion when traffic, or traffic's reduced there.
With the weather, that might be August.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I threw that in there.
Who knows when else snow melts? Next slide. The budget and schedule for this one, with all of the project costs, including design and inspection, we are at one point one-seven-five million. I anticipate this going down because we're using some DOT standard estimates that usually end up being a little high, and competition on this one, I think, is gonna be fairly, fairly good for us, because there's not a lot of DOT concrete work out, and we're getting this advertised at the right time of the year, so I'm hoping that that number will come down pretty substantially. That is coming out of the two thousand twenty Road Rehab Budget, and the remainder of that balance will go to HMA work on North Hill. The schedule for this one, we're gonna be starting bidding February fifth, if everything goes well. We'll receive bids March fifth, and construction will start in late April or early May. We've allotted eighty days for construction, just because of the different phases, you know, each one's gonna take three to four weeks. And then, the completion estimate, if we don't have really crummy weather, will be mid-September of this year. Questions?
Questions? We're good?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Brings us number six, which is a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending an ordinance number thirty-three-twenty-three, amending Section F, applicability of the plan of Section L, application requirements of the urban revitalization plan for the City of Burlington, Iowa.
No changes from the previous reading. Again, that's just updates the filing deadline to be in line with state code for our tax abatement program.
Questions? You guys good? Let's move to the proposed consent agenda versus a resolution approving Iowa contaminated site environmental covenant for property located at eleven oh-six Washington Street, former Dresser Antside.
So fairly simple resolution itself. The sheet behind it, sorry, that should not have gotten into the packet. My bad on that. But then Exhibit A, the Iowa contaminated site covenant, this is essentially a no further action required for the site for additional cleanup, but it has limitations on it. And if you look within that covenant, it's Section, under Section seven, has the limitations that are being placed in here that will run with that land. Prohibition on well installation on-site. It has a listing then under Point two, there, development on-site restricted to open space, green space, or unoccupied storage. What that would, I guess, the biggest thing, limitation on what we would really hope to be able to have in here, we would've liked to have gotten to where we had a no further action that still allowed a commercial usage on this site with, I mean, where someone could be there on a daily basis. We don't have that at this point, and the main reason, we, some of the soils immediately adjacent to the railroad tracks were not, just in terms of not wanting to disturb the railroad track base, did not get cleaned up. We'd be recommending that we go ahead and get this approved. There may be a point in time in the future that we would want to do a lot split, where we could split off the land that's immediately adjacent to the railroad tracks, and then get a no further action that did allow for development in the future on the remainder of the lots, but that's not something that's of immediate concern for us right now. It's just something that stands out there that we may look for doing in the future.
Makes sense. Counsel, you guys have any questions on that?
Jim, if we split the lot, would that fall in line with what the brownfield proposal look like? Could we go through the steps to get it to a point where we could do that, if somebody came forward, 'cause I think we have interest?
Potentially. You, I mean, I think the, what would be looked at there, maybe a fifty-foot wide swath?
Yeah, we'd have to get a little more detail on it, but approximately.
And that's about the kind of setbacks that the railroad's gonna wanna see anyway from their rail lines, so it's not a major loss there, but it's gonna be an additional step down the road if that type of development's gonna be considered.
Is that something that would typically be undertaken by a developer in the event that they came in and wanted to use it as commercial space?
It could be undertaken by a developer or us, either one. I mean, that's, it might be that, you know, six months or a year down the road, we're in a position where we say we want to have this get developed specifically commercially, and wanna be able to go out and seek a developer, and we wanna take these, those additional steps to get it to where it is more attractive and conducive.
Any idea how much financially we'd be looking at, or is that...
I think that's essentially the process of doing a lot, doing a survey, a lot split, and then getting the agreements from the state. And I can't say for sure, but what little I saw from, I think you forwarded, maybe forwarded that to me, Nick, maybe not, I can't remember who did, but from Impact Seven G, the work that they'd have to do would be maybe a couple of thousand, is my guess.
We good? Right on then. Number two is a resolution approving engagement letter with Piper Jaffray and Company to serve as underwriter for issuance of general obligation corporation, I'm sorry, corporate purpose bonds, Series two thousand nineteen A, capital improvement projects for FY two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. James?
Yeah, each year as we go through our bonding, we do a new underwriter agreement for the purpose of doing the bond sale. They take on all the actions of marketing, prepping, helping us through the process of going and getting a rating on the bonds, and then helping for this, with the management of the sale of the bonds, and this is essentially saying that we're engaging them to do those services for us this round.
Okay. SOP on that. Questions, guys? Number three, is resolution approving an amendment to the agreement with Piper Jaffray and Company to serve as dissemination agent for secondary market disclosure. James, wanna add anything to that?
This will just add the new bonds, this year's bond issuance to their dissemination agreement. Now, they, this is one that maybe you understand a little bit better than I do, Stephanie, but it's, we have to make sure that we meet all the SEC filing requirements. They help to make sure that all the pertinent information gets done on an annual basis for that. Is that satisfactory?
Questions, Counsel? Brings us to number four, is a resolution approving purchase of a used two thousand seven John Deere seven-seventy-D motor grader for the Street and Sewer Division of Public Works Department, Assistant City Manager Nick McGregor.
Good evening. The resolution in front of you had authorized the purchase of the two thousand seven John Deere, actually from the Des Moines County. When we prepped the budget previously, we put eighty thousand dollars as a budgeted number for a used road grader. We knew we were gonna go after a used one. It just so happened that the county came on, they were swapping out one of their road graders at the same time, so this resolution would approve the purchase of the road grader from the county for forty-two thousand dollars, so I think it's a pretty significant savings. It's a quality machine, so we know it's been well taken care of.
Questions? All righty then. Number eight is a resolution approving amended agreement with the newly-created Burlington Riverfront Entertainment, formerly American Music Festival, for management of the city's riverfront properties.
You know, one of the confusing things here is, this is something that would go along with the presentation that would be made later in the agenda. I don't know if you wanna just go ahead and have them do their presentation at this point, and then talk about where this fits into the context of what's going on moving forward.
Let's roll with it.
Yeah, let's do it.
Did you guys want copies of this?
Please. I see you bought Casey Fleming with you. I want him to come down here and spin around for the audience. You know, give him a little something, give him a little something, Casey. We appreciate you.
Still skiing?
Yeah.
I see you bought a celebrity with you.
I did. I don't go anywhere without him. So our presentation here is just kind of a year in review and kind of going over what we have planned for this year, two thousand nineteen, coming up. So our first year, our, some of our goals was just to get the community back in support of the auditorium, the port, and the depot. The last few years, it's kinda gotten some bad reps from the public and just in general. So we kinda strived hard this year to, or last year to, just get the community back into the building, have a positive outlook on the building, and just try to get them back in there enjoying shows and events. The, kind of the, go back to that, it's just getting people back in the building, you know, was, is part of that gaining the support of the community. The other goal was to book events encompassing a variety of demographics. We had a lot of great events this year that did very well, that were not your normal music concerts and stuff like that, that people enjoyed. We had great ticket sales for them. It was something that we wanted to do and worked well for us, and we plan on doing that some more as years move forward.
Our haunted house was phenomenal.
It was. That's one of our...
We didn't know you liked that.
I was there every night.
Every night.
Every night, my friend.
Then you worked at the last night.
That's right. I had to support.
So another part of the buildings was just a customer service space to people coming down there booking events and wanting to use the facilities for a number of different activities, and just being there every day, taking phone calls. We were there every day. We try to make ourselves as available as possible to anybody that every, that came down there, and as moving forward, we're doing that, we are adding another position that's gonna even make that even better for the next year and years to come. So proving that these buildings are important and serving a purpose in our building, or in our community, was huge, and I think we did well the first year with it, and as years come, I think it's gonna, gonna get even better. I'm gonna turn it over to the celebrity.
No, I hate that. So at the auditorium in two thousand eighteen, we had fifty events total, over thirty-two thousand people through the doors. Some of the highlights were the MMA fights, the extreme wrestling, the Nashville Hit Songwriters in the Round, Burlington Heritage Days, which will become an annual event, the Haunted Auditorium, as Mayor McCampbell mentioned, was a huge success and will definitely be an annual event, so we also had big success with the Big Church Night Out concert that featured David Crowder, Jordan Feliz, and some other Christian performers as well. The port continues to be a great venue for weddings, birthdays, graduations, anniversaries. We had some craft and vendor shows that went over really well, business meetings, various community events, and we had a total of eighty-seven events at the port. We'll definitely, we're well on our way to that number for this year, if not a bigger number, so. The depot, only two events. The depot has been, has a couple obstacles, one of them in particular, whenever we have clients come in that wanna book events with us, we always mention the depot, but as soon as we inform them that it is open to the public during daytime hours, Monday through Saturday, it's an immediate turnoff, so they usually end up booking at the port or the auditorium instead. So one of the solutions that we'd like to see happen is getting mobile partition walls in place just to separate the public from someone's private event, and we're working towards making that happen, but, I mean, it's a great place for graduation parties. We had one last year, we've already booked a couple this year, anniversary parties, proms, and we've also been talking about doing like a comedy night series on like a Thursday night, maybe once a month, maybe towards the end of the year, so. This is kind of our chance to brag a little bit. Wherever Mike and I go, we are constantly receiving positive feedback from the community, whether it's before a show, after a show, even at Hy-Vee, or hanging out at the Som. People are constantly coming up and saying how great it is to see events back on the riverfront again, and they always have to mention the lights on the front of the building. People love that, and we're proud of that. We also gave away a ten thousand dollar trip to the two thousand nineteen Grammy Awards.
I'm looking forward to it, man. I'm excited.
You didn't win. Deb Fowler was our lucky winner, and so she'll be headed to LA for an all-expenses-paid trip in just a couple weeks, so we're looking forward to hearing from her on that.
Must be nice to be Deb Fowler. Of course, man.
And then, another thing we're super proud of is, in our first year of Refreshment Services, Pepsi reported that their sales are up seventy-two percent from previous years, and because of that, they have also upped their sponsorship money to us this year quite a bit from last year, so it's really good to see that the people we're doing business with are being successful as well.
So in two thousand nineteen, we have some exciting new things that are coming to the auditorium. First of all, we've purchased two seven-foot by ten-foot LED screens that are gonna be hung on each side of the stage, that we are selling advertising for. They are a little over halfway, well, more than halfway paid for. They, the whole thing cost about twenty-five grand, and we raised almost seventeen, yes, almost seventeen thousand right now. We're hoping for about twenty vendors in our first year, but it's really gonna change the look of the auditorium. It's gonna bring it more into the twentieth century. We're gonna do some video stuff for concerts that'll make it more enjoyable for everybody there. There shouldn't be a bad seat in the house after these things are in place, though you'll be able to see everything, as well as getting information out to our clients as they're sitting there waiting for the show to come on. It's gonna have numerous ads playing for our advertising sponsors that are on there, plus anything that we need, all of our shows, events coming up. It's just gonna be a very great tool for the auditorium. Any big arena you go to, I mean, they're littered with LED screens that get information out to customers. It's gonna make it a little bit more sellable when we're trying to go after corporate events that wanna come in there and have trade shows or whatnot, they wanna have their presentations on screens, much like this, that you can put it up there, that, like I said, it's not gonna be a bad seat in the house, and you're gonna be able to see it from anywhere in the building.
So with your sponsorships, you're basically close to paying for them the first year. Great job.
Yeah, our, that's our goal, is we want them paid for in the first year, and I really don't think that that's gonna be a problem. We've been working on it for a little over a month, and just hitting up people, and we, like I said, we've had great response from it, so I think it's gonna, it'll pay for itself in the first year, and then after that, it's just profit, so.
Yeah, I can see that being a definite plus. I know when I've talked to parties that wanna come in there, they mention that that's something that they're looking for.
Yeah, I mean, up to this point, we've only had the projector screen, but it drops down right in the middle of the stage, and it's not always a great place for the screen, and it's not visible from every location. These things are gonna be right there. There's, said it doesn't matter if you're sitting in the very front row, you can look over here, and there's a screen there and a screen there.
Yeah, it'll be nice.
And when you, we've actually been working on hanging them today, and seven-foot by ten-foot doesn't sound like they're huge, but you get them hung, and you're like, holy cow, they're big, so it's gonna be a new, nice...
Definitely welcomed, good job.
You've got one hung already?
About three-quarters. We're waiting for the rest of the power to get put in, but the screens are there. We'll probably start paying the second one tomorrow.
You should be in a text when you get that one of you. You should be in a text when I come down and check.
Yeah, yeah, they'll be, it'll be exciting, so we're looking forward to getting that done.
Sweet.
So the other thing, we're building the Riverfront Entertainment, and with Friday Fest, we were approached this year about hosting Friday Fest, and we jumped on the chance to host it. They wanted three, we're gonna do four. We wanna build on it and grow it. We would love to add like a car show to it, and just make it, make it a great event on a Friday night down on the riverfront. So I don't know if any of you remember the old caboose that was out at, by Community Field, they used to have car shows out there, and those things were huge. People were just everywhere for those, and that's, when I think of a car show and Friday Fest, that's kinda what I think about, that having something like that on a Friday night for people to go hang out and enjoy it, and kind of a few different things. So our, our year in kind of review, our first half of the year, we gave back, it was a little over seventeen thousand dollars to the city, and the second half, we just gave Jim the check tonight for a little over eighteen thousand, so we were a little over thirty-five thousand dollars back to the city on the twenty percent of all events that came through the building this year. So some of the events that we are currently booking and have booked right now in two thousand nineteen, a nationally touring country artist, that is, that will be on sale come Friday, so keep an eye out for who that is, and that'll be...
You're not giving any hints?
Not right now, can't do it, no.
David Kroll.
So there is a David Kroll show, the twenty-third of February. Come down, we're turning the auditorium into a honky-tonk. It's gonna be just a good time, come lion dance, have a good time, so.
I think we've got an ordinance that the mayor gets free tickets to the David Kroll shows.
Sure, sure.
I can't find it, but I mean, I know it's, please continue.
We are doing another wrestling. This isn't the same type of wrestling we did last year, but it's another wrestling event. It's gonna be April twentieth, it's booked, and tickets will go on sale for that very soon as well. We're, we have an offer in on a tour, a nationally touring rock band. They've accepted our offer, we're just trying to come up with a date. Again, I'm not gonna give you any names.
The David Kroll Country Rock Band.
The Friday Fest, there'll be four of those. We're looking at doing a two-day summer concert in June, June twenty-first, twenty-second, that's gonna be, you know, it's just gonna be a music on the river, it's not gonna be anything else, it's just gonna be two days of music. We're looking at doing one-night country, one-night rock and roll, so that's in the works as well. We are doing Heritage Days again this year, the Haunted Auditorium, and then we have a confirmed offer on a great Christmas show, a nationally touring band that's bringing a Christmas show.
Who's the band?
You can't tell.
The David Kroll Country Rock and Roll Christmas Band.
Yeah, I mean, the...
Which I get free tickets to, by the way.
The community will be very excited about that one. This one's, it's a huge show. The only thing I can tell you is it was here seven years ago, and it did well then, but it'll be a good show.
Sweet.
I can't give you any of the names, 'cause we don't either have signed contracts, or they can't, we can't release anything to a certain date, so, but we have a great year ahead of us, and we're really looking forward to it, so. It's kind of our...
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Any plans to tie anything in with RagBri coming through?
So that just happened Saturday. I called Chelsea first thing this morning when I got there. They don't have a meeting with... when I got there, uh, they don't have a meeting with RagBri till sometime in February, um, we would absolutely love to have it down in our parking lot, um, but that is, from what I understand, a, a chamber decision, and, uh, RagBri, I don't know how that all works, but, uh, I've expressed my interest in, in having it down at the riverfront.
You can have a concert, and we could use city buses and bus riders into the concert.
So, it, like I said, talking to Chelsea this morning, they have a long road ahead of them to get this planned, but like I said, we were, we were excited as soon as we heard the news Saturday.
Yeah, or to ha- tie in a Friday Fest on that Friday, or?
We expressed our enthusiasm to have it on the riverfront to Chelsea, so.
So, like I said, as, hopefully as they work forward towards it, that, uh, we will be involved in it somehow, we, we would really love to have it down there, so we'll, we'll just kinda have to see how that plays out, and keep knocking on their doors.
Yeah, I just don't know how you can camp 'em down there, would be the only thing.
Yeah, well, there, again, that's where buses and stuff, you know, there's-
Oh, sure.
With, with the Des Moines County Fair going on that weekend, it really gets rid of SCC's camp, uh, area for camping, but, I mean, so the B's parking sta- or parking lot, that's all grass there, that'd be great camping, there's all places, all kinds of places around town that I think they could put, put camping, that if, you know, if we bust people down to the concert or whatnot, but-
Oh, yeah, bust people, then your options are, are endless, so.
Someone had mentioned Riverfront Park being an option for camping as well. As long as it's not flooded, yeah.
It's not, that new flood wall.
Real quick, uh, speaking of the parking lot, um, we just wanted to raise our concern about getting, uh, rid of it by putting green space. We love our parking lot and value it very much, um, we, we feel that it's, uh, we feel that it's very important to our success.
As you guys are working forward to it, just, just think about the events at the auditorium, you know, um, especially, you know, civic music is one of our big things, all our concerts are September through May, and you're talking sixty to eighty years old, and if they have to walk a mile in the weather that's outside right now, that's, that could really hurt them, or any other events, if we don't have parking that we have right now, so.
Big church, big church night, they were all the way down Riverfront Park.
Yeah.
And we already have people complaining about the parking as it is now, so.
Just, it's, like I said, we're, it's just a concern as, as you move forward as a council that, you know, think of how it might affect us and our business as far as running it for you guys, that if people can't park there, it could, it could hurt us. I like the green space, but it, I like the auditorium and the events that we have to-
Valet parking, I don't know, different options we can look at when you get closer to that.
We just wanted to put our two cents in on that.
Paul Ellis feels, we can always have the David Kroll groupies, you know, too.
You're the only one.
So, you're gonna drive the buses, I hear that?
We'll talk later.
Any other questions for us?
Good job.
Yeah, tremendous, thank you.
How are, how are, are things impacted with the change in structure or organization for AMF?
So, with AMF and Steamboat Days combining, uh, about the biggest change is that, you know, instead of Steamboat Days being, uh, a board, they've become a committee under, uh, the AMF or, uh, Burlington Riverfront Entertainment. We will be managing their liquor license and selling, and, uh, pretty much handling all of the aspects of the liquor license, um, as they move forward as a, as a committee. I don't know what they have plans for their, their next-year event, um, I know they've taken a, a year off this year, but I know they, they're talking that they wanna continue in the, in the years to come, but that's kind of with them, and see how they develop that, uh, I don't know if they'll work off our two-day concert and we see how that works, um, like, doing it, it's, it's gonna look a little bit like Steamboat Days as far as the two stages, but, you know, we're not gonna do the carnival, we're not doing the Mississippi Landing, um, the parade and stuff like that, it's, it's strictly music, two days, and try to just- Yeah, just music on the river, it's, it's a music festival, um, that we wanna have people come down and enjoy.
So, my question, we didn't think you'd just address that, so in, and when you guys first signed up as a, as a group, you didn't get any of the alcohol, or you only got a part of the alcohol sales because the Steamboat Days had the dram shop, now you're gonna be managing that?
So, the first, for the first part of the year, up till October, uh, we didn't get any of the alcohol sales, Steamboat Days took all that, they ran all the events, staffed it, managed it and everything. Um, October came around, um, actually back to July, they let their, um, their full-time person go, and at that point, David and I started taking on the, we would book the events at the port, the auditorium and everything, but then they would also come to us, and they would either, um, book their, the way they did their alcohol then, it was come in, and you would say, here's a list of what, what do you want, and they would order it, we'd take their order, take their money, we'd order the alcohol, receive the alcohol, sell the alcohol, everything, uh, up to that point, and at that point, we were getting twenty-five percent of, of the alcohol sales after expenses and everything, um, and that's, that's continuing till the end of January, and then it's supposed to, um, there's supposed to be a new, um, contract come February, not, Casey might be able to speak more on how that's laid out, if you wanted more detail on that.
Okay.
Yeah, real quick. Casey Fleming, president of the Burlington Ri- Riverfront Entertainment Group, um, name change, um, driven by a few things that, that Mike touched on, um, most notably marketability, um, you know, saying hi, we're the American Music Festival, you wanna have a wedding here, um, or, or a business meeting, uh, using the word festival, um, you know, it wa- you know, the, the Steamboat Days logo was, was part of that, uh, we wanna embrace Steamboat Days, fifty-six years of history, it's, you know, been a fantastic event, we could talk about that at length at another time, but, um, that needs to be part of what happens on the riverfront, there's fifty-one other weeks a year that, uh, we've just shown you can, can bring in tens of thousands of people and lots of money back to the city, um, and, and, and not only the city itself, with the partnership we currently have, uh, a successful partnership, I might add, and thank you for, uh, but, but the feedback we've gotten from retail folks as well, uh, the downtown impact, restaurants, bars, et cetera, has been, has been fantastic, so we're, you know, we, we gotta look at this as a, not only a year-long thing, but a, a long-term thing, right, our agreements through twenty-twenty, uh, through twenty-twenty-one, and, you know, we wanna make this thing go on and on and on, so the Burlington Riverfront Entertainment was something that we thought through a broader net, uh, and what, uh, these guys and, and our group's out trying to sell, uh, Steamboat Days becomes a committee underneath that, uh, umbrella, if you will, um, and that the alcohol's a piece of it, it gets a little, um, I mean, you can get into some long discussions about the initial agreement, because part of our contract was, Steamboat Days had the liquor license, and that's in our contract, which I think is in your packet, um, so, you know, trying not to upset the apple cart too much, at least through the first contractual period, was why we chose to kinda leave that be, is they exist as a committee, they already have the liquor license and the history of having it, if we can manage it, and, and we can make some money off of it, and helps the city make money in other ways, you know, we thought for the time being that'd be, uh, the most straightforward way of going about that, uh, without having to redo contracts, and redo agreements, and redo licensure, so beyond that, uh, we've had some other discussions, and I think there's some other possibilities down the road, but, um, that's, that's kinda where it's at now. But, if, if, if you can picture too, just kind of as an overview of, of the Burlington Riverfront Entertainment idea, without taking all of your time tonight, but if you look at the, the Greater Burlington Partnership, so they've got the umbrella corporation that is the partnership, and then if, it's like a table, right, so then they got legs, you got CVB, you've got Economic Development, Chamber of Commerce, DPI, the Community Foundation, so, you know, we look at Burlington Riverfront Entertainment being everything that happens from the port to the auditor, or the depot and in between, um, underneath that, uh, wh- currently is Steamboat Days, inclusive, but not initially, not, not an initial partner, if you will, Civic Music, um, Snoble, um, Marine Ham and Bean Dinner, a handful, the other legacy events that were in that initial group, we approached those folks and asked them if they wanted us to jump on board and, and be part of that partnership, like the chamber model, and, and they weren't quite ready to do that, but, um, you know, so it's partnership, trying to involve everybody, keep everybody on the same team, utilize these guys and the expertise they have for other events, um, throughout the year, so, with that, I'll let these guys, and if they have any other closing remarks, if you guys have any other questions.
I just like the direction that we're moving in, um, I, I just think a lot of things look promising for the auditorium, and, and, uh, not saying that a lot of people didn't try and put in a lot of hard work before, it just seems like, uh, I think sometimes you just need the, just have the right fit, I just think we've got the, the right fit, so I'm excited to see what, what two thousand nineteen brings, and how maybe we can break through that glass ceiling and punch on throughs.
So, I, I sit on the board, and I've had an opportunity to work with the three of them, and four people in your room, and then everybody else, and I can tell you that this year we're gonna take large steps, um, and the direction we're heading, uh, is vast contrast to where, to the conversation we were having a year ago, so.
And I can't credit these two guys enough, um, the hours they put in, the effort, the knowledge, the expertise, um, making decisions to go out and buy lights to light the place up at night, um, you know, the, the work they've done on, I mean, everything from, you know, unfortunately, we had to have a funeral there a couple weeks ago, but, uh, they embraced that, jumped out there-
Even that, yeah, even that was just, uh-
Um, so, so hats off to these guys and the staff they have, um, 'cause they're the ones that are, they're the feet on the ground making it happen, so, and thanks to the city.
You guys are definitely the right fit.
Good job. Lights all the way around though, fellas. All right, good.
Uh, don't forget the mayor's tickets, okay?
The only question I've got on the agreement is, what's changing from last year?
There are two changes, one is that instead of AMF throughout, it is BRE. Uh, the second has to do with just a, is essentially a reflection of the, what we've gone through now, and I'm not even sure where it's at in here, uh, it talks, it kinda talks about if, uh, an agency has taken over in the future, and those responsibilities transition to someone else.
That indemnification paragraph on like the second to last page.
So, it, it kind of says that this agreement will transfer or flow over to that new entity.
Without having to redo it.
Without having to come back here and redo this, uh, I don't think that'll happen, but it's just a, it talked about, it kinda brought up the need to have that additional paragraph in it. Otherwise, this is the same contract you had last time.
Yeah, and our name change went through the state about a week ago, I think officially, and we'll have a new logo for you too soon.
The only other things that I would just follow up on from the presentation, um, the, the Tiger Grant is a, and the Great Places, um, and the Great Places designation and, and the funds that go with that are kind of talked about here, the concern with the parking, um, is all of those negotiations, when we talk, had that Riverfront Plan put together, there were a lot of entities that were involved, Steamboat Days was one of those players that was in it, um, as we move forward, if we ever get a Tiger Grant agreement to bring to the council to, to consider, we're waiting on DOT at this point, Department Transportation, um-
I thought you were gonna say we're waiting on NIC, and I figured that was probably standard.
Federal Highway Administration, uh, whenever we get that in place, we can, the first thing that we'll need to do is get an engineer that, that we're partnering with to, to move forward, uh, we've at least gone through a review process with several engineering firms, but we can't negotiate a contract with them until we have an approved contract from DO, or FHWA, uh, for the Tiger Grant itself. After that, I mean, our goal would be to have that, all those entities that were involved in that initial discussion on the riverfront, be back involved in, in how are we looking that these things come together over the course of the next couple of years, so somehow we gotta figure out how to make everything work, um, and I, I'm sure that not every need is gonna get hit in that, but at least we wanna make sure that everyone is involved in that discussion. Uh, the other point that was brought up, this isn't so much for you, so RagBri, uh, the, the point on this will be, uh, I mean, the chamber will be the, 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 the lead entity in making this be successful, but they are not gonna do that on their own, um, I haven't been an overnight town for twenty years, but when we were an overnight town, uh, the, the kickoff meeting that will, that RagBri will have with our community, uh, they'll invite a whole lot of folks to go to that initial meeting, uh, they'll bring forward a book, last I saw was like this thick, uh, that gives a, a full outline of the different things that an overnight community needs to be thinking about to have a successful event, from, uh, parking to camping to entertainment to food to transportation through the community, I mean, it, there'll be chapters on each of those sections, uh, the chamber's gonna need folks to take, to get, to be involved in the planning efforts, and they'll have someone who will end up being responsible for each of those different designated areas, um, and then it'll take a whole lot of folks within those areas to make this to be successful, so there'll be a lot of negotiation that goes on in that, and trying to figure out how do we make everything fit in, we're too early in the process to get caught up in those details, but that, we're gonna need you all involved in helping to make that happen.
We've got the right people, my friend.
So, I think that's all I had to say on it, but the resolution you have here is to approve the, the amended contract, it's pretty straightforward in Stanford, based off of the change that they've had with the name.
Right on, you guys good?
Yes.
All right. Okay, um, we've got some public hearings, set A, B, and C. I'm gonna run through them if anybody wants to say anything, uh, you know, uh, when I'm done. Consideration of Plans and Specs for the two thousand nineteen Dengworth Park Pool Improvement Project, it's gonna be February nineteenth, uh, B is consideration of a two thousand nineteen A Amendment to Urban Renewal Plan for Burlington Consolidated Urban Renewal Area Related to Use of Incremental Property Tax Revenues for Public Improvements, please don't leave yet, please don't leave yet, um, no, I'm just playing, I'm just messing around, go ahead, go ahead, I'm just, I'm sorry, I just had to do that, I, I can't help myself sometimes, I'm sorry.
Thank you, guys.
So, yep, thank you. Something's wrong with me, man, so, uh, B is consideration of two thousand nineteen A Amendment to Urban Renewal Plan for Burlington Consolidated Urban Renewal Area Related to Use of Incremental Property Tax Revenues for Public Improvements, that's March fourth, and then the last one is consideration of two thousand nineteen A General Obligation Loan Agreement, and a principal amount not to exceed four million nine hundred thousand dollars, uh-
On, on that, uh, we do have Travis Squires from Piper Jaffrey here to talk, uh, about the bonding that, that we're looking to do, where it fits within our outstanding debt, um, and we'll just, to, can look at the overall consequences of what we're talking about.
Consequences, it sounds so dire.
It does.
Man, this is the guy we're dealing with on a regular basis, it's not easy, it's not easy.
Most people say half-full, half-empty, I say it's almost empty.
Hey, Linda, can we switch spots?
Yeah. See, just getting out of control.
What's your problem, man?
Little gavel, and everyone's gonna go, take a ding.
You're out of order, counsel. How was your drive?
It was not, not bad.
Good.
It's gonna be cold, though, the next couple days.
Yeah, you wanna make sure that you gas up, keep your fuel tank full.
Yeah, I gotta travel to Cedar Rapids and Coralville the next couple days, so we'll see if that-
Gas up at Burlington, my friend, make sure you gas up here in town.
What, what I thought I'd run through is, is just an update to kind of the presentation you saw, uh, last year, when we went through the same process, and, uh, about five years ago, we decided, let's, let's have a nice overview before you get into adopting budget, make certain that we understand any consequences of, of new debt that's coming up, but, but really, what we're, we're looking at is just kind of the execution of the financing plan that's been put in place for the city, and, and how, uh, you guys are in a, a great position, um, you're looking at, you know, being able to lower, um, some of your tax increment financing asking, and potentially a, a lower tax rate here beginning as soon as twenty-twenty-three, um, on your, your debt service, um, you're also moving, you're down below seventy percent on your debt limit, so all those things are, are trending well, the one topic we're not gonna hit in depth will be the sewer side, so that's probably where the more of the, the bad news reigns, but, um, you know, things that you're working through there, that'll probably be, um, some discussions later, so, and just kinda moving through, um, quickly, um, section one just kinda hits the overview, um, so if you're looking at the, kind of the bullet points of, of where we're gonna be, um, as far as, uh, debt limit margin, if you wanna go to the next page, Eric, sorry, um, currently at sixty-five point four-five percent, um, your, your rebates push that just slightly higher, your current year's rebates, uh, debt service levy at three dollars and eighty cents per thousand of taxable valuation, and then, you know, as we continue to work through the five-year plan, we've, we've put a, a number on all of the capital projects, and, and that is reflected in the debt profile that you'll see, um, some of the goals of administration, um, you're no longer claiming a hundred percent of your TIF increment, uh, that's available, uh, so that change occurred a few years ago, and then looking at lowering the property tax levy if possible over the next couple of years, looks down to just managing some of your capital project list and debt burden, but current forecast had the levy moving down to three forty within the next forty years in, in fiscal twenty-twenty-two. So, that's the high level, now, now you get some numbers, um, a- as far as the, you know, looking at your, your financial profile, a, a good year for the city on valuation growth side, uh, one of your strongest years that you've had, um, three different valuations that, that we kinda look at, the, the- Three different valuations that, that we kinda look at, the, the debt limit is your full value. It doesn't impact anything other than debt limit. So that's the full valuation of the city as assessed without any rollback being applied. So we take that 1.35 billion value times 5% is what drives your debt limit number. The taxable valuation with utilities and TIF in the middle there is what you, we use for calculating your debt levy only. A nice 5.39% growth from last year. And then the far column is the operating budget, so it pulls out the tax increment financing valuation. So that's what you set your other levies on within your general fund. And as you can see, the 4.84% growth is the strongest that you've had in, in the past 10 years as a city. So a lot of the initiatives that you guys have taken on, some of the capital investments, some of the tax increment financing work has obviously flowed through in your, your valuation and your tax base growing. And, you know, really if you look at over the last couple of years, it's been some, some nice growth for the city. Where you had a, a very rough plateau. So, you know, at that same time where we're dealing with tough budgets and tough decisions, a lot of that being driven by the, the valuation growth not being as strong. So these, just because you've got stronger valuation growth doesn't mean the budget's necessarily easier. Though you do have a little bit more breathing room when it comes to, to tax rate. The, the bottom table then does give debt limit. Debt limit is always a snapshot in time. So in this case, I've just shown your debt profile as the GO outstanding and the retirement of your debt, and it shows the cumulative. I've not put any valuation growth in there, but you can see over the next couple of years paying off a little over $5 million of principal on your debt each of those years. So the next page deals with kinda drilling into the, the details, just a little bit more on your total payments on debt. So you see principal and interest, total PNI or total payments there. Fiscal 19 was at 6.4 million. This year would be at just shy of 6.1 without any additional debt. Now, there are a few additional projects that will, will factor into that. So this is your if no new projects were taken on by the city profile. It then flows through on a levy rate summary, so you can see that ticking down. Now, over the next couple of years, you do have some capital projects, roads, et cetera. Pumper truck, et cetera, that, that's in with this current year's budget. That will keep you at that 3.80 tax rate really until you get to that blue line. So the levy rate summary, down below that blue line is where we do forecast being able to see that levy rate drop. The 3.40 forecast was assuming that the city did proceed with that looming project of Cascade Bridge that's been out there. So that is built into the model right now, even though I know that that's not currently on the five-year CIP list. So we've kind of always kept that on year six to show kinda worse, not worst-case scenario, but if the city moved forward with that project, could you still afford it within your levy constraints?
Are any of the riverfront project matches included in that model?
The riverfront project matches?
They are.
Okay. So the next page details some of the other resources that you have committed to debt. So there's some money from your tax increment financing area. You can see that's heavily weighted over the next couple of years. And then the, the need for tax increment financing revenues to support your debt does go down. Some solid waste, some sewer revenues, local option sales tax. The numbers listed as flood were the anticipated revenues from the sales tax increment for the flood projects. Those have been lagging behind, so currently we are not forecasting those revenues from fiscal 20 to 23. So we pulled them out of your debt profile. While we do still anticipate collecting revenues, we're targeting those now to go towards the next phase of projects. So your, your debt levy will be able to, to pick up a, a portion of, of that project. As the unfortunate part of that is when you had intended for the state to set your base on sales tax revenues, you were delayed a year, and that delay of a year puts you in the middle of the fertilizer plant project kinda spike in retail sales. So you're, you're now finally worked back above that base level. And we'll start receiving some more increment during this upcoming year. But we pulled it out of our model to be conservative when we're illustrating your debt payment availability. The next page then deals.
Travis?
Yeah, go ahead.
Put that back up for a second.
Yeah.
One of the things, you mentioned that we don't have Ca- we don't have Cascade Bridge in our CIP plan. And this, the, your highlighted area is part of the reason why we left it out for now, just to reflect. We need to see what happens with that local option sales tax, the, the, what we have, that increment that can come in, not the local option sales tax, the sales tax increment for the flood mitigation. We need to see that come back up and support the, this bond issue. I mean, he's showing this with the debt service picking up the 200,000, but we need to see that it is realistically picking up, picking up so that when the principal payments start kicking in in 2024, up at that 640,000 range, that there's actually an, an increment that can support it. And, I mean, we, we think that that's where it should be, but until we see this, us back on track to where we're getting an increment, it's, I, I wanna make sure that we're protecting this project that we've already committed to before we take on that, that high debt load.
Yeah, otherwise, otherwise it erases ability to be thinking about lowering your debt service levy. It just, it just completely off the table if, if those revenues don't pick up. So we, we feel this is actually quite conservative on, on what we're planning there. Keep in mind that the, the total projected flood mitigation revenues was at $26.2 million of revenue. So we do anticipate those ramping up, but right now you're, you're tracking behind. If you realize kinda normal growth, you'll still end up probably $3 million behind schedule on those revenues. So just looking at various ways of, of making those up. Okay. The section two then just deals with the current financing. So you can see total principal, interest being forecasted. These are a little bit more conservative than current rates, so I do anticipate the ability to, to lower, or, or of lower interest payments. So 4.8 million dollars of total new debt issuance, which is less than the amount of debt that you're paying off here in June 1. So decreasing your overall debt profile. Right now, your, your debt service levy portion debt is over 14 years. It's largely level principal and interest payments, other than working through those first couple of years as we're dealing with the old plateau on your debt. So once we can move beyond 2023, your debt structures get certainly more attractive. On the TIF side, we're doing 10-year level principal as a way to try to lower your overall interest costs that you pay over time on the bonds. So, next page. Feel free to stop any, any time on these. I wanna be cognizant of your time, but not gloss over things unnecessarily. So we're gonna have to zoom, but I don't really need you to, to deal with the numbers in particular, other than just I wanna give you the big picture. So if you zoom all the way into the top, just so we can see the, the total projects that are being listed. What's been identified on those columns four, five, six, seven, and eight, deal with what's on your current CIP plan to be funded with the debt service levy only. So as you see, the, the asking on the debt service levy, 2.9 million this year, 1.8, 2.5, 1.7, 1.7. And then the out years are things outside of the five-year. So we've, there's 2 million allocated for streets each year, and then 6 million allocated for Cascade Bridge, shown in 2024. So now if you slide down the, the table just a little bit, what you can see here is that up until Cascade Bridge over the next five years, we're looking at 14-year schedules, just like we have this year with the level principal and interest, once you get past that yellow section, which is through 2022. Once we move beyond that with Cascade Bridge being a 20-year project, all other future debt will convert to the same type as the TIF with 10-year level principal to allow you to continue to pay off your debt more quickly and have lower interest rates and lower overall net interest cost. On the far right, or sorry, left side of this, you're seeing the forecasted levy rate, and you can see what's remaining dollars within that levy. So you can see using up to 3.80 through 2022. In 2023, you can see the ability that we're actually, still have about $2 million of surplus between 2023 and 2029. That would be identified at trying to pay off some of your projects more quickly. Perhaps converting Cascade Bridge to a 15-year project or picking a few projects and doing kind of a, a two-year payoff on some of the future streets. So eventually, once you get past 2031, you know, ignore those surpluses for now because we don't have any future debt beyond that. So only look at the stuff really above that orange line as far as surpluses. And you can see we're, you're tracking really well. The thing that we would, you know, we don't wanna necessarily get into a scenario where you drop it to three bucks and then you have to go back up to 3.40. So looking at continuing to step that down. I think by the time you get out to 2030, you could be down to, closer to a $3 debt service levy. So that's kinda the big picture without really drilling into the numbers. All the, all the math is there for those who love math, but for those who don't, I'm not boring you with that, so.
Just one quick question, so that's projected with Cascade being completed.
Yep.
In the event that the sales tax revenue doesn't increase, and we don't do that project, when does a $3 levy kick in then? How much, how much earlier does that move up?
Yeah, so on, on, on your overall debt service levy, with, with your valuation where, where it is today, which the valuation for debt service is 854 million. So every dollar will generate about $854,000 annually. So if you, if you're looking at Cascade Bridge and a $6 million project, I would say you would be pretty safe without Cascade Bridge if you completely took it off the map. I'd feel comfortable with your debt profile probably moving to three and a quarter in 2023. And then you would, depending on future projects, be looking at maybe dropping it a little bit further by the time you got out to 2030. So that, it's probably an extra 15 cents. I'd be a little hesitant to completely unwind it on paper. You could drop it to $3 sooner, just on the way we're doing the debt profile. But I'd rather see you continue to accelerate a few of your projects and, and get so that you don't have, you know, these first, next five years, you're doing 15-year debt. Ideally, you'd be doing 10-year debt, so kinda gotta work through those. I'd like to get that portion prepaid before you move down to $3. But there's not a right or wrong answer, that's just a, a debt profile kinda process that we're looking at for you guys. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, the next slide takes you to, well, you gotta skip the slide, I gave you a nice cover sheet. So existing TIF obligations, right now, so we're taking existing revenues. We're not increasing or decreasing. It's rated about $3 million of income. You can see your total payments, those are fixed and known. The rebate obligations are estimated. Those will be driven by when the actual valuations come on. Total obligations and income, and you can see a, a surplus being generated there. Over time, you know, that gives you a couple of options. You know, if you're looking at what projects fit within, you know, perhaps some of your street projects, you know, are within the tax increment financing area, which you will see some projects on the, on the next page. But ultimately, you know, the, the use that you've had for TIF, the heavy usage of TIF, will start being reduced. That'll allow you to convert more of your valuation to the general fund, give yourself a little bit of, again, breathing room, especially in years if you have a tighter year of valuation growth. You know, it might be a good year to release a little bit more TIF to allow you to continue to manage that side of your budget. So that, that looks well, that looks really good. You know, certainly there's been some heavy tax increment financing investments of the city, and you're kind of moving past that real heavy investment range that you've had. Now again, you're, you're gonna see a, a very similar sheet here. Again, I'm gonna kinda just drill, drill in on the top there where, where I have a few of those projects listed. You know, a couple of those are this, this current year, so they're, they're already factored in. We do have a, a few different projects with flood protection. So the, the question was asked about, you know, what do you do in the instance where, you know, you're not seeing those revenues come back into play? And, and what we're, we're doing right now is allocating a, a few, in this case, for the, around the plant for sure, 4.2 million from TIF, and then, or sorry, 2 million from TIF. And then you can see a couple of other flood protection projects in the tax increment financing area with the thought that this is protecting, you know, business investment that the city's made. It's certainly an economic development purpose and remediating slum and blight, if, if you will. So overall, those are the projects within the, the current TIF plan. So if, if you kinda slide down then and out to look at the surplus on the left, so you can see, you know, tax increment financing revenues will still undergo some pressure out through 2024. After that date, you'll start to see the ability, when you get to 2028, of start moving away from some of that TIF revenue. You see those annual remaining. Certainly, we don't have projects planned out all that way, but, you know, if, if your investment, you know, stays the same. Again, this is holding your tax increment financing income stable, so not taking any additional growth in the TIF over the 3 million that you're currently collecting. So allowing all of those valuation growth to just roll back into the general budget. So that's a, that's a great scenario for a city not to really be reliant upon your TIF area growing to fund what's on your capital project.
And really, we don't have it as a goal, but within our TIF, we're, we have about 10%, 10% of our valuation is in the TIF area. And if you look, or is being used for TIF purposes. If you look at what other communities are, our comparable set of communities is on the average more in the 6% to 7% range. We're on, we're on the high end. And capping that TIF income in that $3 million range helps to kinda manage that and over time get down to more of a, what an average community is using towards TIF.
Again, one of the things we've looked at is just being really aggressive and, and paying off a lot of your TIF projects. So we have, we built an alternate model where we've accelerated your payments as well to, to look at, you know, at what year could you possibly have all of your, your TIF obligations paid off? And if my memory serves me, that was 2029, based on what's on this, what's on this one. Alright, moving on to the CI plan, CIP planning with sewer revenues. This is going to be relatively short because we're not looking much at, at future. So just trying to, at, at this point, look at where you're at currently. You currently have five debt obligations paid solely with sewer revenues. You have another debt obligation, that's a general obligation bond that you're transferring sewer revenues to pay for. You can see your total principal and interest payments lined up in PNI total, about $1.5 million per year. Compare that with your existing budget where you have, after paying, operating expenses, about $3.3 million. So you see sewer revenues for debt service. That is the, the margin that you have right now built into your plan as we move forward with the sewer separation work. Early models are indicating, you know, a few years of 5% increases. This year, I think you got three slated in there, is that right?
We've got a, actually for over a five-year basis, we have 3% for the non-metered and 10% for the metered. And I don't remember what that blended average is, I think it's closer to the four.
Yeah. So what, once you, once we get all the, the project cost estimates built into the model, we'll, we'll come back with, you know, any recommended changes on that. But that's just one you're gonna have to keep monitoring as project bids come in, you continue to redesign projects and get final engineering costs through that. You've set yourself up in a really good position to not have the, you know, 25% annual increase in one year. But certainly this is not a, a cheap project that's thrown on your lap. So we'll just be taking bites of the apple out of it. City's done a good job of managing expectations with the DNR, you know, working on a more flexible timetable. So all of that is trending well. One thing we are bringing to you on the, the next sheet is an opportunity for refinancing two of your loans that are outstanding. One from 2010 and one from 2011. The opportunity to save roughly 240,000 cash basis or 280,000 on a present value. The ability to remove a couple of your reserve funds and transfer this into debt covenants that are more on par with what we would see on the SRF debt, which only allow, only requires 1.10 coverage, so $1.10 of available revenue for every dollar of debt service. All of your conventional bonds right now require $1.25 of available revenue for every dollar of debt service. So as you can convert that debt into better covenants, that will lower the required rate increases in the future. Now, it doesn't help your cash flow, I mean, you're still gonna need the cash flow for projects, but with the amount of debt that you'll have outstanding, you'll wanna be in a one. but, uh, with the amount of debt that you'll have outstanding, um, you'll want to be in a one-ten coverage environment as opposed to one-twenty-five. So this is a step to convert that debt, to get the better covenants as well as save money. Um, it meets the minimum, uh, thresholds, um, in this case, uh, savings as a percentage of refunded bonds. If it's north of three percent, uh, it's usually a, a nice say, well, let's move forward. And it does save, uh, fourteen percent of, uh, remaining interest cost on the debt, so a nice, nice chance to reduce some debt. Uh, you don't have a hearing on the table for that, that'll likely be at your next, um, work session and meeting cycle. Um, it's on a slightly different timetable than your other debt issuance. Well, that kind of takes me through the summary, I know that was brief, that was fast, it was a lot of stuff at you at once. Um, as far as our anticipated, um, timeline, it follows a, a very similar schedule to last year. Uh, looking at, um, selling debt around April one of this year, uh, so that you have bond funds in hand, May one. So for your equipment purchases, um, that, that you may have, uh, May one is the targeted date for receiving, uh, funds for, um, the bonds. Um, other action that you'll have coming up, um, at your, your March meeting, um, where you are approving your budget, uh, you'll have a, a resolution that comes from Dorsey and Whitney on setting the date for the sale, authorizing our firm to distribute an official statement, as well as setting what we'll call as your pre-levy. Um, so it sets your rate or your debt service payment, so they do not exceed three-eighty this year for fiscal twenty. Jim, you have anything, anything else?
Yeah, at the public hearing that we're having this next week on the four point eight million dollar bond issue.
Yep.
What is, what is that covering? What are we borrowing four point eight million dollars for?
So your, your four point eight million, some of that is, uh, it's, it's street work that's within your CIP. And I don't have that list, is in terms of the TIF projects, um, that is covering, excuse me, let me get there, um, adaptive signals, um, the Broadway extension and the demo of the PD building. And there was a pumper truck in on the CIP along with, uh, the miscellaneous street upgrades.
As well, and the final item is some of the river, no, we don't have any riverfront on this one, do we?
No.
No, I see airport is.
Yeah, oh, yeah, a- airport is the final item, correct.
But two years.
I'm talking about the five-year model.
Yeah, the five-year model has it because it's the twenty twenty-two.
Two is one of them.
The twenty-one borrowing for fiscal twenty-two has, uh, riverfront improvements listed on it.
And that's what I wanted, because I was looking at it and I'm trying to figure out if those are already built in.
Yes.
Yep, correct.
And I guess in relation to this, the other hearing is one that is more driven by state statute to have a, to use TIF funding for a project, what, what's required?
Yeah, so to, to use TIF funding for a project, it requires you now to amend your urban renewal plan, to specify, um, the dollars that you're gonna spend on the project and give the county and school district a chance to consult with you if they so choose. So that's all part of the amendment process. You've already, um, held the amendment to cover two of the projects that are on this funding list. Um, with this current amendment, though, we did add a few of the projects that are forecasted to be financed next year. Um, so those were the flood protection and Washington Street, which are.
As well as the police department building.
Building this year, so those are the items that are on the urban renewal area amendment, which is the second year.
That would be the old police department building, not the new one that we just built.
Thanks for the clarification, James.
I thought you might need that, sir.
I really didn't, but thanks anyways, James. Jerk, I mean, we love you, city manager, any other questions?
No.
Nope, that was very thorough. Do you make home visits when I have insomnia?
Yeah, yeah.
No, it was good, it was good.
I can help people fall asleep, that's no problem.
Well, I found it very interesting.
Yeah.
I know, you're a number cruncher, man.
I need more, I need more graphs and charts.
Uh, no, actually, it was perfect. You don't get anything else, thank you.
Good?
We good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, drive safe. Okay, um, let's move to our treasurer's report. Annette Crowner, class eighty-seven.
Okay, December's treasurer's report was in your packet. Um, there's nothing unusual, I mean, the things that, a couple of things, there's like on the capital projects, there's some big projects like the Mount Pleasant Street reconstruction and the bridge, and those are just timing issues. We've got some money in in January that I requested in December. So other than that, everything else is just moving along, we, this has our transfers in it from December. I don't know if you guys noticed anything you had any questions about.
Any questions?
All right.
Right on.
Thanks.
Thanks, Annette.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number two discussion item is annual audit presentation by Anderson Larkin and Co. So they sent you a loan, no Co tonight?
No Co.
Uh, the guy that's supposed to be here is in the hospital with his pregnant wife. So I found out I was coming to visit you guys today about ten.
Well, all right, then.
Anyway, uh, I'm Mike Pedliska from Anderson Larkin, um, I think this is year three that we've been doing the audit for you guys. I'm the guy that does the grant work, so I have been here before and I also do the audit for the county, so I'm familiar with Burlington a little bit.
Sweet.
Okay, so you guys got the audit report, I don't know, I, I understood a, a week ago or so. So on page seventeen, I'm gonna very quickly go through this, I was told you got lots to talk about tonight, so. On page seventeen and eighteen is the independent auditors reported, kind of talks about what we did, what rules we followed and what we found out, okay? So first paragraph says, we have audited the accompanying financial statements. Second paragraph, management is responsible, okay? So we help you guys put this audit together and we, we, uh, help Stephanie and her, her people say these numbers go over here on this page. But, uh, ultimately, the responsibility for the numbers is you guys, okay? Our responsibility as the auditors in the third paragraph is that we're gonna give you an opinion. And the opinion is, isn't that you made money or lost money or you're super efficient or you, boy, do you need to do some work. Uh, it's just that when we look at the numbers, it's a fair picture of what actually happened during the year, okay? On page eighteen, uh, first paragraph says, in our opinion, the financial statements presented, uh, or, excuse me, financial statements referred to are presented fairly, okay? In the auditing world, we can get three audit opinions. There, uh, your audit is presented fairly, it's not presented fairly, or it's su- so bad that we can't even tell, okay? So, uh, your audit is presented fairly, it's called a clean opinion and unmodified opinion, that's, that's as good as it gets, okay? On page twenty-three, um, this is a very condensed version of your, uh, statement of financial position. Way back when, when I went to school, we called this a balance sheet, it lists the assets that you have and the liabilities that you have on the books and what's left over is called net position, okay? So comparing two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and eighteen, uh, the first subtotal all the way over on the right, um, for two thousand and eighteen, you have total assets of a hundred and forty-seven million. That's an in- an increase of eight point six million from the previous year. The majority of that increase in assets is you've got more capital assets. We got more roads, we've got more buildings, we've got more road graders and all of that stuff, okay? Lib, uh, so assets went up eight point six million, the liabilities, the, the money that we borrowed to pay for those new assets only went up three million dollars. So we, our assets increased over our liabilities by over five million dollars for the year. And that's based upon what we see on page twenty-four, which is your revenues and expenses. We finished the year five million dollars more revenues than we did expenses. Uh, the majority of our increase in revenues is related to capital grants. Uh, you guys get state and federal grants to, uh, help with operations, they al- you also get state, state and federal grants to, to buy things. Uh, um, the biggest portion of that is public works, you get state and federal grants to build roads and put up new bridges and stuff like that. So we had about a million and a half more dollars worth of, um, capital grants during two thousand and eighteen compared to two thousand and seventeen. Our expenses are up about two point three million dollars over fiscal year seventeen. And most of that is sitting in public safety, public works and the sewer fund, which you probably already know. All right? Um, the only other thing, well, I guess two more things. Uh, I'm on page hundred and forty-nine, which is, I said I'm the grants guy. Um, if the city has more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of federal grants in a year, I have to come and do, we, or that your auditors have to do special procedures, okay? Uh, historically, you guys are always over that seven hundred and fifty thousand, so I come in and do special procedures, basically to the big one, so.
What's the, I mean, what's the need for that?
The feds. Yeah, uh.
Enough said.
Okay, um, if, uh, the, the terminology is single audit. If you have more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of federal grants expended in one fiscal year, uh, the Single Audit Act kicks in and we have to do special things, okay? So, uh, historically, or actually since I've been involved every year, um, we have looked at this, uh, transit grants. It's, uh, the biggest overall grant that you get and we work through some math and determine which, which grants we need to look at every year. But basically, the bottom line is we look at the big ones every year, so, uh, I drill into, um, are you guys filing your reports on time? If we're spending money out of the transit fund, are we spending it on, spending it on transit things? And, uh, look at payrolls and all that good stuff. Happy to report, I didn't see anything that looked out of the ordinary.
It's always good to hear.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Uh, last but not least, page hundred and fifty-two, uh, usually when I go talk to city councils and boards of supervisors and all of that, they want to know if, uh, we're following the rules. On page hundred and fifty-two, we do have an instance, uh, halfway down the page, it says financial, uh, condition. We have a couple of funds that at the end of fiscal year eighteen had negative balances. Some of that is as simple as we had to pay for something before the grant money came in. The two funds that are related to that, negative balance are, uh, property maintenance and safety coordination. And that's on page seventy-seven, note number eight. It's not necessarily a huge deal that we have a negative balance, other than the fact that you guys need to have a, a plan to get rid of the negative balance. And like I said, sometimes it's purely a timing issue.
Actually, that, ca- on a cash basis, they're even. It has to do with deferred, uh, our, our liabilities for pension and, uh, OPEB, other post-employment benefits.
Things that you have no control over.
Those are, um, things that we have to book and show the liability that's there for potential future costs.
So that's why that's there.
Yeah.
Period, okay.
Okay. Uh, any immediate questions? Okay, uh, one of the things I always say when I come visit folks like you guys, uh, you guys pay us money to, to come in and do the audit, it's also included in that fee is normal question and answer stuff. If, uh, Stephanie has questions over the course of a year or Annette needs help with a grant question or something, give us a call, shoot us an email, we're not gonna send you a bill. If you can call and want me to do ten hours worth of research, that's, we'll probably need to talk. But, I mean, if I can answer something off the top of my head or.
That's good to know.
Spend ten minutes, uh, researching so that you guys can get the right answer.
Just normal, just normal questioning, Shane has that, tends to have abnormal questions.
That's how I roll, my friend.
Okay, all right, anyway, uh, thanks for being our customer.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next we have number three, an opportunity zone presentation by Jeremy the Legs Hess.
Good evening, council, um, Jeremy Hess with the Greater Burlington Partnership, um, Economic Development Division. Just wanted to come and visit with you folks tonight, just share a little bit about opportunity zones. If you have received, uh, questions or if you've heard about these things, I just thought, as far as a, an economic development tool, um, just wanted to come and share a little bit of information. So it's not meant to be, uh, an exhaustive presentation, it's just kind of an overview. So, um, opportunity zones, um, the goal of opportunity zones was, is part of the two thousand and seventeen, uh, tax reform bill that, um, our federal government passed. Um, the, the, the goal is to drive, uh, private, long-term investment in areas, specifically low-income areas that are both rural and urban. And so in our community, uh, there were four vo- zones that were submitted, um, to, uh, the folks in Des Moines. And three were approved, they're approved by Governor Reynolds and then Governor Reynolds then sends them up to the federal government. And then they are, um, either approved. So we sent up to Des Moines four, governor approved three, three were sent up to the federal government and those three were approved. Next slide is a map showing you the areas in our community that are in opportunity zones. It covers a great deal of our, of our city, um, and there's a, there's a lot of different, um, very exciting areas. But as you can see, it's, uh, it's gonna cover, uh, most everything along Roosevelt, uh, up until the tracks on the north and then it stops on Division Street to the south. Everything along the riverfront, everything along downtown, um, is all in, uh, a designated opportunity zone. We will not have the opportunity to change opportunity zones, to add to them. Um, once they are set, they are set for good, so, um, so there you have track two, three and four. And then I thought I'd just, uh, spend a little time, go ahead, next slide, uh, just to kind of explain a little bit of how these things work. So it's a, they call it a new class of investments. So the first step, um, is if, um, Mayor Shane has, uh, a, a whole bunch of Microsoft stock and you go and sell that. Um, if you sell that asset, um, and you gen- you will generate a, a liability, a capital gains liability. And we're gonna go through an example, uh, specifically with some small dollar amounts in a minute. So, so once you sell that, um, that asset and you incur that capital gain, you have a hundred and eighty days, um, from the time you, you, you sell that, that asset to invest those dollars into a opportunity zone fund, okay? Um, and I'll talk a little bit about how, how that happens. Um, the third step then is within six months, um, ninety percent of those funds must be invested from the opportunity zone fund into, uh, an actual opportunity zone project. So first they go into a fund and then the fund makes an investment into a project. So at this time then, as soon as you've made that investment, the capital gains tax that you would have had to pay are deferred. Let's go to the next one. So, uh, one thing is you can, you can do this on just about anything. You can do, you can make investments in housing, they can be business startups, they can be real estate, um, buildings of any sort and kind, except for, uh, you know, they call it sin, uh, sin property, so you can't, you can't do it in a liquor store, can't do it, set up a strip club, those kinds of things. Um, there are a few requirements that go along with, um, that investment. So one of the things that they, they want to do is to drive investment into these areas. So if you were to go and you were to purchase a building in our downtown area, uh, if you were to purchase that building and you, you purchased it for a million dollars, um, it would require that within thirty-six months that, and I have to check, I believe it's thirty-six months, but there is a doubling of investment that's required. So what they don't want people to do is just go buy a building and sit on it. If you buy a building for a hundred thousand dollars, uh, for that to be a qualified investment, you have to put another hundred thousand dollars into it, okay? All of these things can be layered with TIF, with debt, so, so you can bring a number of different tools to work on a project. So the entire project doesn't have to only be funded with opportunity zone fund dollars. It can be some, some with TIF dollars, some with, they can, uh, an investor could go get some debt. Um, all these things can be layered on top, let's continue. So you've bought that building, pardon me, at year seven, after you've sat on that investment for seven years, eighty-five percent of the original capital gains is due. So you don't get out of the capital gains, the initial capital gains, uh, tax liability completely. At year seven, eighty-five percent of it is due, which, of course, you've been able to use that money for all those seven years, next. Then at the end of ten years, after you've sat on that asset and grown it, um, invested, and it can be sold then at that time with zero capital gains tax liability. So let's walk through, um, kind of how this would look in, in, in round numbers. So Rachel is our friend and she sells her shares in. So Rachel is our friend, and she sells her shares in Apple, and she makes a hundred dollars, uh, in gains. So Rachel then takes that one hundred dollars that she had in gains and she puts it into an opportunity zone fund. The opportunity fund, fund invests in a small business in one of Burlington's opportunity zones, okay? And then at year seven, as that business grows, Rachel has to pay eighty-five percent of the original capital gains tax that was due. So the capital gains rate is twenty-three point eight percent, times eighty-five percent of that original hundred-dollar gain, um, she has to pay twenty, twenty dollars at that time. So in the upper right, Rachel's investment continues to grow in value. Uh, after ten years then, Rachel could sell that stake in the small business, um, and that business would sell for a hundred and seventy dollars. Rachel then owns zero in capital gains tax on the entire hundred and seventy dollars. So, and I forget what my next slide is, if it's gonna, yeah, let me, let me just talk about a few next steps, and then I'll, I'll try and answer any questions. But one of the things that makes our state a little bit different from, um, from other states is that some governors have moved to match the state of Iowa capital gains tax policy. So, you know, you can invest in an opportunity zone fund and avoid the federal capital gains tax, but in Iowa, you still have to pay the state capital gains tax. So we are lobbying the governor to see to it that we match the Iowa, uh, the capital gains revenue matching so that, because these people in, in opportunity zone funds, they can invest their money anywhere. So there could be, uh, a, a neighboring state or Wisconsin that has matched that, and those dollars will, will flow there because they can get double the, double the be- the benefit. So, um, some other steps is, is, uh, continue to figure out exactly how to formulate a strategy for marketing these opportunity zones. Lot of questions out there, it's like this really new, great tool that nobody's quite sure how, how to use it yet. We've been, uh, pursuing, uh, local opportunity zone funds, um, and then another strategy would be to begin reaching out to, uh, known investors to let them know of, uh, I think the main thing is for us to, to put forward a list of projects. Buildings, areas that are, that are, they're great for investment, that are in opportunity zone funds, and let these people know, um, that they're out there.
I would think you'd be able to get some investors, uh, on this.
Well, sure, there's, there's-
I may, I think, I think that would be, uh-
Well, the perfect list is actually what was presented to us last week in the Brownfield assessment.
What's that?
So, oh, the list of all the different structures, that was in the Brownfield assessment that we checked last week.
The list of properties?
Those, that's really the perfect list that, before the start.
Right, so if we, I mean, you could pick a building that, that is sitting there, um, that, um, you know, you have a high net worth individual is, obviously are people that, that, uh, that you would, you know, target and so forth. People that care about their community, um, and people who are gonna sell a large asset. They need to know that they can put that money to work, avoid the capital gains for seven years, grow that, uh, grow that asset in our community and then sell, if they wanted to, sell it. A couple of things I, I wanted to, the, the rules are still coming out from the federal government on this, so some of this has been a moving target. Just a couple of things, um, when it comes to setting up an opportunity zone fund, first of all, it's very simple. It's a one-page form, anybody can do it, you self-certify, you don't have to hire attorneys, you don't, and anybody can do this. Uh, if you have a capital gains liability, you can self-certify and start your own opportunity zone fund. So this is not something that's very difficult to do, um, doesn't take tons of lawyers and lots of paperwork. Another thing, they just came out with some, some language, uh, from the state or from the federal government that says you can hold these, this, this is supposed to expire in twenty twenty-eight as far as the time when you can be investing, but you can actually hold on to the, the asset past, uh, up to two thousand and forty-seven. So, um, so there's plenty of time to take advantage of these things. Another, uh, recent, uh, announcement the government made was that, um, when it comes to, um, the significant improvement, I told you if you bought a hundred thousand dollar building, you had to put another hundred thousand in it. They do not count the land that the building sits on as, uh, part of the, the number they use for the doubling requirement. So a lot of investors were really worried, they, they, they can purchase a, a very expensive piece of ground that has a very, um, cheap building on it, um, and they would have to put this huge amount of money into this property. That, that's been clarified now, you, you, the, the doubling down is only required for the building or the structure that sits on it. And then one, one last, this is kind of a net noi detail, but a big, a big holdup in, in all of these things was that the government required, you had six months from the time that money hit the opportunity zone fund, before it had to be, be deployed. And they got a lot of pushback on that because the, uh, you know, it just takes time, building permits and, and all these things. So they've given it, um, a thirty-six month window that, once it hits the opportunity zone fund, it's a, it's in safe harbor for like three years, gives you time to work up a project, get the permits and those kinds of things. So, um, I get a phone call at least once a week from somebody about, is this building in an opportunity zone? Is this in an opportunity zone? What do you have in an opportunity zone? Speaking with, uh, commercial brokers, it's kinda the buzzword right now, it's what everybody's talking about. Worked with Zach and with others at Southeast Isle Regional Planning to kinda put together a list of, how do we, how do we take the best advantage of this? How do we start putting forth a list of projects that are ripe for opportunity zone investment? And so anyway, I just thought it was time to, to come before you and share a little bit about this. This is new, um, again, all the rules aren't written, but, uh, we're trying to, uh, make sure that it's, it's a good tool for our community that we take advantage of it.
Joni brings it together, though. Joni brings it together. That's what really makes this thing work. You're gonna have to get the governor.
Do, uh, do you have a copy of that assessment from last week?
No.
I'll get you a copy.
Okay.
It'll, I think it'll answer a lot of the questions that you're asking about projects and, uh, wouldn't you agree?
It'd be helpful.
Yeah.
Who'd you say, what were the other, what were the other, uh, states that had, that had, uh, uh, that the, that the states were in?
The matching state. I know Wisconsin is one, Illinois does not, uh, Missouri does. I don't have the, the, I can get you a list of, of all those states, but there's, it's about, um, probably twenty-five of the fifty states that, that have that match. So there's only half of them that are, we, we wanna get on the, the most level playing field that we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So how, when someone calls you and they say, is this building in an opportunity zone, how do you respond to that?
Well, the easy thing is to look at-
Most of Burlington is, is that what you say?
Look on the map, um, and so, and honestly, there, there's local businesses that are in our community that are considering investing in, in, and, and doing something with their building, simply because it's in the opportunity zone, so.
Anything riverfront, anything downtown, that you told us.
Yeah, there, anything in the riverfront, anything downtown, most everything along Roosevelt. So it's, um, yeah. Most of, much of our community is, is eligible to do this. And, and there's, again, it's, it's important to notice, it doesn't have to be just a building. It can be a business, it can be, um, it, there's, it can be housing, so, you know, people can-
Say everything but a what? What'd you call that?
Sin business.
Everything but a sin, but, we don't want sin business.
I know, I saw Shane, he went-
What did track one originally look like?
Track one is up-
It goes south.
I think-
From angular. From angular to-
Lower right corner?
No, angular to-
Down by where it says South Street.
Did it run to south?
It went quite a way south. I didn't, I just had him take that track off of there because I didn't wanna demonstrate a track that wasn't in an opportunity zone fund, so.
Were there five census tracks?
Yes.
For the community? So, and four of, four of them qualified, but three of them were obviously stronger than the fourth.
Right. And big thanks to Southeast Isle Regional Planning for putting that forward. That was, I mean, if, if a community did not put forward their census tract and their, their governor didn't prove it, they're just out. So, uh, we're very fortunate to have three, three tracks.
We good?
Alright, thank you.
Very intriguing, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. Number four, tennis courts, let's talk about it.
I just wanted to update the council. I met with, uh, um, Notre Dame and Burlington School Districts over the last couple of weeks, and then, uh, all met together last Friday. As, uh, going through our budget, our focus is on Dankworth Courts. I guess, from a use perspective, the two schools, uh, have a general use agreement on, uh, how they're gonna operate this year. The A.D.s from both schools are gonna meet again, but, uh, as far as practice and meet schedules, that, uh, seems to all be worked out this year. And then, uh, they're gonna be discussing with their boards on, uh, funding, and then that'll come back through to city council once their boards have a chance to discuss that. And we'll probably look to enter into some, uh, agreements, formal agreements for, uh, based on those fundings. May not be matching timeframes based on the funding committed, but, um, both are, uh, agreeable to doing that and, um, seem to be all on the same page as far as what they're willing to commit. And, um, but they have to bring that through their boards before we come back on it. But just wanted to let you know that, uh, have had those meetings and they, everyone seems to be on board and, uh, looking to make improvements to Dankworth for a twenty-five-year upgrade, so that we're not revisi- revisiting this again in three, four, six years, just trying to get a, a longer term timeframe.
Thank you.
We good?
So we'll probably have some agreements in the next couple of council meetings that will be brought forward.
Okay. Number five's Capitol Theater, let's talk about it. McCoy.
Hello. Uh, well, I did send a letter, so hopefully you all got that in your packet, with information on how the Capitol Theater is doing. Um, I took over about a year ago, and when I took over this position, that does not pay, the Capitol Theater was in big trouble and really, yeah, almost losing, um, its property. It was two months behind on their building payment, their loan pa- their, um, bridge loan payment and their property tax. Also had about thirty-two thousand dollars in bills that were overdue, um, and not being able to pay them. Uh, I am happy to say that now, we are current on all our loans. We have paid all of those back bills and we remain current for the last year.
Yes. Raise the roof.
Yes, yes, so. Thank you. And the Capitol Theater, I, uh, in your letter, I gave you some stats and everything, but, um, is, is doing well, but we still are struggling, of course, because it's a nonprofit and we're trying to, um, the main problem for us is trying to get that loan paid off because the principal, um, it's not the principal, but it's the interest, is killing us. Over three thousand dollars a month in just interest payments. So, um, I'm in the middle of a Capitol campaign trying to get that paid off. And then the second level of that would be to try and renovate the second level of the annex to hopefully bring in more, um, possibilities for more, um, entertainment, so. Last, uh, on this recent Saturday, we had a full house, we had a great concert, people were having a great time. They were dancing in the aisles and to the, um, Elton Dan and the Rockets and a lady who did, uh, Stevie Nicks quite well. So it's a great place, and if you didn't come, you really missed out, it was a fun time. But what I wanna say is just listening to Jeremy and listening to a lot of the things you've been talking about tonight, the Capitol Theater is one of those buildings that could just be sitting there abandoned, and it almost was abandoned a year ago. But thanks to the community, the people care about it, they step forward and they help bring the money to us to help us stay above water. And what I am requesting is that you, um, I would make, I mean, appeal to you to consider reallocating the hotel motel taxes just to help us out a little bit. We're not even asking for much, six thousand a year, just to help us try and get above ground and be successful with the Capitol Theater and not have it be another abandoned building.
Questions?
And I might also add that everyone that is working there right now is working for free. It's all volunteer, just trying to keep it here, so.
And you've got wonderful staff down there, too.
Staff that are not being paid, yeah, fantastic people, all of them giving of their time, so, um, we just hope that you can consider giving us a little bit of help.
I applaud your efforts, you've done a tremendous job.
Thank you.
And if you haven't been to a Capitol event recently, you're missing out, 'cause they truly are fun. It has just an intimate feel and it's just, it's just a lot of fun.
Thank you, yeah, and we have a great calendar ahead of us, and a lot of these people back here are here because they support the Capitol, so.
Yeah, and, you know, especially last summer, um, one of my annual things is to take off work completely for the Snake Alley Film Festival, and then, you know, that brings films from all over the world, and I've been able to see films before anyone else has, um, you know, meet directors and producers of films. And it's just, I, I can't imagine not being able to do that every year. Not to mention the many other events that we have there, you know, the, the symphony has their, some of their events there. You know, there's movies that you don't get to see often, or movies for the whole family to go see again in theater, which you never get the opportunity to do. So I just, um, I don't know what we could possibly do to help out, maybe not this budget year, but allow it for the next, just because we have every-
If we, if we were gonna, you would basically, 'cause that comes out of hotel motel, right? So you would have to re-portion that from someone, so who would take it from?
You're really re-portioning it probably from one of the other entities that we're providing funds to. And, you know, some of the context over the last couple of years, and we talked a little bit about this, you know, hotel motel tax two years ago was nine hundred and ninety thousand, and it's now down at eight hundred thousand. And at the same time, our support that you're having to throw into the, to keep the RecPlex operational and the golf course operational has had to increase. So we've had, we've had a loss of income and our, our own fixed costs for things that are internal have, have gone up. And so it, it has put a lot of pressure on here to try to figure out, how do you prioritize the rest? But that does, it, there is some, something to be said on, about how do you prioritize, which, which are the right entities to be getting some funds, and should it be reallocated or not? And then, that's a hard one. That's a really hard one to, to have a discussion about, how do you prioritize between them?
So I, a couple of weeks ago, uh, we talked about the RecPlex budget, and I know we're gonna talk about it again here this evening, but if I remember properly, it was a fifty thousand dollar increase in their funding this year.
It's, uh, I think it's seventy thousand in the current budget, and I want, was thinking it was ninety or a hundred thousand for base operations. They also, any of their capital items come out of hotel motel as well. So I, I'm not sure that, how that might impact it, but for just operations, I think it's up twenty thousand.
My thought process then, my thought process is now, and I may be the only one sitting up here saying this, but, um, I would like to see us maybe move that number back a few thousand, and maybe we can't do a full six, but maybe we meet them halfway and do three this year, um, and figure out if there's any way we can pinch enough pennies in there to try and facilitate that. And like I said, I might be the only one up here saying-
You're not.
There, I mean, well, there is some hope that the hotel motel tax is gonna come up with the opening of the turf.
I certainly agree.
And then we talked about maybe changing and bringing the tokens back because the revenue from the concession stands was dramatically down. And I know we used to issue a token when you paid to go to the RecPlex, and people had that token, well, I've got this token, I might as well wander up there and get a concession. And we did see an increase, I believe, and I think we were gonna talk about that, so.
And, and it just comes back to the fact that arts and culture, to a lot of people, are more important, if not just as important as sports. I'm a sports guy myself, not a big play guy, but I have to respect what, um, what you bring to the community. And like Jim said, I don't think, I don't know that we can do the full six, but I, at least we can get the ball started somewhere.
I, I wouldn't take it out of, uh, supporting the RecPlex, 'cause all you're gonna do there is create a deficit in that account. If you're gonna do something, you gotta find a, a different way to make it work. I mean, you could, uh, you could cut it out of renewable energy, uh, you could cut it out of, I mean, there's, there's things you're gonna cut it out of-
Why, why does it say renewable energy, James?
Because it's not an operational cost.
Okay.
You gotta, if you're gonna make a cut somewhere, it has to be out of something that's not an operational cost, 'cause all you're doing is creating a deficit somewhere else.
Okay.
I'm still open, uh, you're not alone, um, I still think, uh-
I'd like to think somewhere worth five, three thousand dollars.
And I think, uh, yeah, I think we've gotta find a way to squeeze, um, some, some, uh-
Remember that you also invest four hundred thousand in the auditorium, which would qualify primarily as arts. So, I mean, that, it's, doesn't mean that you don't do other things, but don't think that you don't invest in culture and arts.
And what do we do with arts?
Well, I just have to just finish by saying I, I feel that, uh, we've worked very hard to build the arts culture here in Burlington, especially downtown with the Arts Center and now the Capitol Theater. And yes, they are smaller than the auditorium, and I'm so thrilled with their success, and we work together. Uh, I work a lot of, uh, together with, uh, Mike and David. In fact, I am the chairman of their Heritage Days Committee, I put the committee together for them. So, uh, we support each other, um, but there are just some things that we just need the support of the community, we need the support of the, the city, and it's, it's a lot of hard work to try and keep these things going. And I think that our community loves them and would like to see them continue, so a little bit- So a little bit of help, if at all, can help, make it happen, we'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, and I think also, to piggyback on that, you know, if, if the city can show their support and show that we feel like it's something we should invest in ourselves, then I think the citizens will also recognize that and be like, alright, you know, they're, they're getting a little bit backed from the city. They, the city must have some sort of trust in the fact that you are going to take that and you're gonna make it grow exponentially. And I have...
That's my plan.
Every faith that you can do it, especially you.
Thank you.
And all of your wonderful volunteers and hopefully soon to be not volunteers because they'll be paid.
Yes. And yeah, because you can only count on people to...
Yeah.
To give of their time freely for so long.
You've got some great volunteers.
I do. Fantastic, yes.
Could we get a list of, I guess I, I forgot renewable energy was in there. So could we get a list of where those funds are?
I was just gonna go through.
Thank you. Um, the community or economic development.
There may be some shifting going on.
It doesn't always come from one body.
No, that's what I'm saying.
No, and that's what I was saying. The Economic Development Fund gets a, like a...
I mean, out of...
Little money just for saving.
Out of hotel motel tax, we're budget, we're contractually obligated on 30-some percent towards, works out to about 33% towards the Chamber.
Yep.
Community field is, gets about 100,000. We provide 50,000 for capital items annually, plus we pay the utilities out there. Renewable energy is 5,000. The bridge run match, which would change the structure of how the bridge run works. I don't know if, without the 6,000, I don't know what that would mean for operations of, of that being able to be an annual event. But that gets 6,000. The art guild is at 12,250. Municipal band's at 3,000. Symphony is at 3,000. Beyond that, we provide funding into the general fund, which would cover, well, really essentially auditorium, towards the auditorium expenses would be your, your most direct line item. That's 180,000 for general fund operations. 15,000 to the golf course, 90,000 towards the Recplex for operations. The only other thing is for, we put $100,000 into the dock structure to, to do the engineering fees on that. That's the only project that's coming out of there.
Yeah, so I would think we'd be able to...
So that you can make a reduction in one of those, but don't do it, if you're gonna do something, you can't, it's, you're gonna have difficulty doing it from the support for operations of the golf course, support for operations for the Recplex, and you can't...
Touch the bees.
Touch the, well, you've already committed to that. That's a grant that, or an obligation you've done in the Chamber is an obligation you've done. Those others are things that you have flexibility in.
Well, let's, again, we see what...
Can't knee-jerk.
We see what she's, yeah, we see what they're asking for. Let's get through, let's get through the rest of the budget and then we'll get down to brass tacks on what we wanna try to get worked out. But you're doing a fantastic job. Make no mistake about that.
Thank you.
Staff, the volunteers, you guys are wonderful people. You really are. That's not lip service. You guys are doing it down there, so. Hey, we hear you. Yeah, God bless you.
Thank you so much.
And I won't forget it.
Thanks, Tam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Have a good night.
Okay.
Go ahead. I would, would like to have that, if you could email that to us. I would like to look at that, but I don't wanna knee-jerk reaction on, on this. But I'd like to look and see, what are we committed to? What can we, what can we, what can we adjust?
Yep.
Please.
Yeah, they're all on...
Because some of them, like you said, we can't.
You have a, you have a listing of it.
Yeah. Well, we do have a list there in here.
There's a sheet that was a couple of meetings ago, when the CIP was done, that night.
But you said, you just said there's some we can't touch.
I'll, I'll, I'll give you an email that summarizes it breaks out.
Okay.
Higher, order of priority on that.
Thank you. That's what I'm looking for, Jim. Is it an order of priority, what we can and can't do? Because someone's gonna get, the only thing is, as much as I'd like to do that, someone's gonna get hurt a little bit. And we need, we need, rather than knee-jerk it, we need to...
Right on, right on.
But this is a second request for a very worthy organization. I'd kinda like to see what you can do.
Okay, you crazy cats, you guys ready?
Yeah.
We've already done the update for the auditorium. Thank you, David Crowe. And appointments? Any, any issues with appointments?
Well, we need a, we need a city council person for one of them going.
What do we need? Talk to me.
Just a minute, I gotta pull it back up. They're, they're moving it to two. The sports commission, we have, we have one on it and they're saying two.
So it's the...
I, I was the alternate. I can do it.
Has increased the city council member representatives from one member to two members.
And I think...
Linda's on it.
I was the, I had the least number last year when we reassigned them, so I don't have...
That's good with me.
You got it?
Yeah.
We'll get them.
Okay, thank you, counselor. All right, which brings us to number eight, 2019, 2020 budget for development parks and rec.
Can we take a quick five-second break?
Let's do that, yeah. Take a body break, shake your legs, and we'll be right back. Those of you that are at home, get something to drink. Have a cup of cocoa. We'll be back.
Hey, what are you bringing tomorrow?
Lord of mercy.
Well, I was, I told...
No, you promised Lotte Bola.
I, I told him. I did promise.
You promised Lotte Bola.
You creep.
No, I, I got you covered.
Okay.
We gotta call him out, Rinker.
I know. He was trying to back out. No, I was, I...
You know, I was telling Linda I'm gonna bring...
I saw between the lines, John.
I said, bring it on.
Okay, we're gonna go right into, thanks for coming back, guys. We're gonna go into budget discussion for community development parks and rec is next.
And before Eric, before you get started, we had an announcement that had come to us, Des Moines County Solid Waste will shut down for operations on Wednesday. Means the landfill is closed. We, that means we can't pick up garbage.
Can't pick up garbage.
So Wednesday routes, people who are on Wednesday routes are gonna need to put out their garbage by 6:00 AM, 7:00 AM on Thursday. And they'll get to, your crews are gonna get to them as they can. So Thur, on Thursday, they're gonna be getting Wednesdays and then trying to work through Thursdays and then... I'm assuming you're not gonna get two days' worth of work done when Thursday's gonna still be pretty cold.
Correct.
Well, not just cold, it's just they can't get two days' worth of work done in one regard anyway, so. You're, hopefully...
Thursday should have theirs out at 7:00 AM, just like the normal.
Tuesday should be picked, Thursday should be, have theirs out on their normal day. Some of that will get picked up. It'd be nice if all of it could, but folks need to understand that they may, their, Wednesday will not be done until Thursday and some of Thursday will, has the possibility to bleed over into Friday.
Okay.
And with that, you can turn it over to Eric. You had some handouts, the budget sheets for the Eric's departments. And I think that he might have had a copy of his presentation for you.
Yeah. We got, we got...
Pissed deal, anytime.
I'm gonna go through, start with community development and then if you have any questions on that and then move into parks and rec. Give an overview of our departments and then get into some budget details as well. If you have any questions, certainly let me know anytime. So again, our staffing's remaining same as last year in development. We have seven full-time and one seasonal nuisance staff. Through our nuisance report, I'll show kind of some of that impact. Parks, eight full-time, one part-time, and then 19 seasonals. Seasonal is a big component of our parks, which is Parks, Forestry, Golf Course, Pool and Recplex. So our mission's to improve safety and appeal of our community through high-quality customer service and consistent code enforcement. The two areas under the Community Development Department are the Code 1301, which is Building Code Administration, which is the Building Inspectors, Rental Nuisance Inspectors and then our Project Coordinator. And then Planning and Zoning, which is myself and our City Planner. That hopefully will be filled here in the next couple of months. Again, some of the issues and items that we are working through nuisance enforcement process. We've had some recent code updates on our notices and how we're handling some properties and nuisance vehicles. Trying to get compliance is sometimes an issue through that process. Tried to do a little more proactive nuisance inspection and enforcement, especially through our seasonal staffing. Staffing-wise, we do have a City Planner and Code Inspector Two that we're looking to fill. Hopefully have a planner here in May. Everything works out with that. And have our Code Inspector position open right now, Code Inspector Two. I-Works is a system we budgeted for last year and implemented over this past summer with our inspection and permit management. That's drastically improved our tracking and reporting for rental inspections, nuisance, building inspections. We can go through that system and see all the different items or times we've addressed that property, whether they've gotten a building permit or had a nuisance or if they have rental inspection, going back and seeing what issues were there in the past and then how they address those. And it's made it a lot better for our tracking purposes to work through that. One of the bigger items that we've had in the past is the private hazard tree removals under nuisance, which is 1301-529. That's our nuisance budget that we handle any abatements through. And then adding in the tree removals, the ash trees, kind of a number we've had in there at a above-normal rate this year, looking at $70,000. Typically in the past, part of Emerald Dashboard, been in the $35,000 range. We're even seeing that, kind of be low for what we're doing with trash and grass now. But hopefully in the next couple of years, that'll come down close to that number and we've decreased it the last couple of years. Some of the projects that we've worked on, abandoned property acquisition. Every year, we think we're gonna get to the end of that list, but it just continues to grow. It's amazing how many properties have been abandoned in this community as we continue to sell them. And I'll give a report on that. But there's a lot of areas in the older neighborhoods especially that have properties that are either neglected, abandoned or unfit. Worked through our nuisance garage program, still working through that. Had quite a bit of compliance on that. I think it was around 80% or 75% compliance. Still have some outstanding issues that we're working through on that. But did see quite a bit of compliance through that program. Grant projects, that was a big thing through our City Planner, so that's important to get that position back in full. Continue to work on the Flint River Trail. Hopefully we've got, can complete the one remaining section in the coming years. Citizens Academy, this is the image of the first class of Citizens Academy. We still have that open on our website for those that wanna apply for the second year of that academy. I think we had a lot of great feedback, a lot of great responses. Appreciated all the different departments that were involved in that. But just better educating citizens on what we do as a government as a whole and what functions we serve. Earth Day and the trash drop-off, Don mentioned the trash drop-off. We had had over 21 dumpsters and 28 tons of trash that were disposed of last fall through our trash drop-off program down in the riverfront. And then Brownfield, nearing the end of those EPA-funded projects. Healthy Neighborhoods, there's a picture at the bottom here in the center of one of the homes that was part of that Healthy Neighborhood Program. On the left was obviously before and on the right was an after of some siding and railing work that they did on that home. And then just assisting with other projects throughout the city. The redevelopment program, again, through, that we acquired through 657A. This kind of gets into our, as we get into the CIP, our Housing Demolition Fund or Redevelopment Fund, the need for that. In the last three years, we've sold 12 and then 14 and currently, currently seven properties to date. Average just under $2,000 or around $2,000 per property sold on average. Generally, it's around 1,500, just go through that process to acquire them and go, get them sold. So making a little money there, but not a big moneymaker by any means.
That's what our B, we're trying to be greedy.
But we still have quite a few properties that we have acquired that we have to go through the demolition and process and then sell the vacant lots. So it's important that we have funding available to demolish some of those homes. And then that funding in the past has been used for grant match for the Housing Trust Fund or CDBG applications. So that funding has kind of dwindled down to what we have available, especially with the Parkview Care Site. Working on covenants right now, so hopefully we can bring that forward here in the next month to be listed and have some sale of lots on that. Those are development reports, and that should say FY18 at the top. But so building inspections, FY18 was an extremely down year permit-wise for collective permit fees. Total permits were down slightly, but we just didn't have the larger projects. New construction, as you see there, our collective permit fees. And for building inspections in FY17 was 339,000. Last year was 175,000, which is quite a bit less than what we generally collect. The state evaluation on those permits, which can be some indicator on valuation increase in the community. 34,000, $34 million worth of valuation constructed in FY17. And FY18 is 13 million. So that's not something we have a direct impact on as far as what those permits are and come in. We're just doing the inspections, but it is a kind of a indicator of where we're at in the community and what's going on in the community. Something we hopefully will see a return on in the, in the coming years. But we have seen some downward trend this, last year and this year to date.
Yeah, that trend, if you were to look in the back of your audit book, it does have in one of the tables back there a 10-year history of what your collections have been. And I think this might be about the lowest of the 10 years. So that's something to just take note of. And that's, I don't think that's something that we're gonna see the same thing occur this year because we do have a pretty significant project downtown. But it does say that our economy was a little bit slower this last year.
From the rental inspection side, saw a little uptick. We have the three-year and five-year time periods for renewals. For single-family and duplexes, five years. For multi, it's three years. So that kind of changes every, every year based on how those hit in the schedule. But we were up slightly in permit fees, buildings and units inspected in FY18 over FY17. Nuisance inspections, properties processed. FY17, we had either complaints or properties that we went out and inspected on our own was a little over 1,300. This past year was 2,300, so that was a big increase. I think a lot of that was from our seasonal staffing and as, as well as some of those targeted programs, the targeted garage program. Of those properties, again, we saw the uptick in a number of abatements by owner, but also the number of abatements by the city. We abated 521 properties from the city standpoint where we hired the contractor to go out and pick up the trash or mow the, mow the yard or what that might be. Again, we like to see the higher number abated by the owner, but there was quite a bit that was abated by the city. Nuisance fees or tax collections, whether they paid the city directly or through their property taxes at the county, were up considerably in FY18 as well, from 47,900 in FY17 to 72,000 in FY18. So from an operating budget standpoint, we have FY18 budget and actual and then FY19, what was approved last year, and FY20 proposed. Between Building Code Administration and Planning and Zoning for FY20, our, our operating budget is 13,250 less in FY20 over what was approved last year. Typically, we have been slightly under actual expenses over what the budget was. But we will have some new staffing coming on at slightly lower amounts as far as salary. But also, a lot of that, or some of that is also due to decrease in the nuisance category, the 529, when we're taking, or having less budgeted for ash trees. I think we had 75 or 80,000 budgeted last year and down to 70,000 this year, so part of that is due to that. But on the opposite end, again, revenues are down a little over, around 20,000 over last year. 373,000 total between building permits, housing permits and nuisance collections in FY20 over what was approved last year. As you see in FY17... As you see in FY seventeen, the actual amount was four hundred and fifty thousand, so about eighty thousand dollars less in this year's approved budget than what was actually collected in FY seventeen. And the CIP through the, excuse me, in the Development Department, we have the redevelopment program. FY twenty and FY twenty-three is budgeted at thirty thousand a year over those four years. And then in FY twenty-four bumped up to forty thousand. This had been in the budget at twenty thousand annually over the last couple of years. We're seeing from, just from a demo bid price that might handle one or two, one and a half, two homes at twenty thousand. So needing to increase that to be able to demolish some of these structures, whether it's fire where there's not insurance, abandoned properties that are in a deteriorated condition, as well as using, having funds available for local match directly for housing grant programs.
Something here that as Eric and his staff has worked on this, that portion of the budget this year. Just that they had a lot of input to me in regards to the changes that they've had with the properties that they take, they have taken over. Over the last few years, they've taken over several properties that they felt that they could turn back over, sell back on the market to folks who would rehab them themselves and improve them to proper standards. They now have a really a backlog of properties that really need to be demoed. And the twenty thousand a year, when you have an estimated demo fifteen to twenty thousand for one house, just it's, we, we need to prioritize it more than we are. So there is a little bit of an increase here. It's not as much as it needs to be. I, I just need to point out, we need more money put here than what we are. We were, we were up at fifty up until FY twelve when we had significant cuts on everything.
The, how much do we have the lots for sale for next to Dankworth Park?
We don't have them listed as of yet. Still working on actual amounts, but probably thirty to forty thousand.
There's three lots there, right? And if I remember correctly, the funds raised from the sale of those lots will go back into replenish this fund.
It will and that's, and that's part of why I felt at least a little bit better with this. They have, you have four properties right now that they want to take care of in demo. So they know they have sixty thousand dollars worth of cost. That they're relying on the sale of those lots to make that work with this budget that's up here.
How much, do you remember what the figure was? How much were we going to have to put into sewer for those properties? I thought we had to add.
That was, it's been done, but that was, it was about thirty-five, forty thousand? So, so, yes.
See, that's a big one that we did request or would like to see increased in the future. Something we'll continue to evaluate and bring back every year. Other projects in the CIP and the five-year CIP, so those, that's the only project in current FY twenty budget on, that's on the annual basis. The other projects that we have, Healthy Neighborhoods, fifteen thousand in the budget for FY twenty continuation of last year. Of that, five thousands, local funding, the remaining amount would be outside entity, whether it's foundations or donations to that. Wayfinding signage in FY twenty-two, trying to follow the plan that was in place through the convention of visitors, the chamber. Couple of years ago, that was approved to develop more wayfinding signage throughout the community, not just downtown, but directing to downtown, directing out to Roosevelt, to Recplex, getting some of that in place. And then this is the final year of the Brownfield assessment that we have wrapping up through that grant program. But again, no local funds through that. Other possible future projects, whether they are ones we've had in the budget in the past or something that may be an opportunity in the future. Downtown facade project, at one time we did have funds for a second phase to that. Obviously was cut through the reduction in sales tax and hotel motel sidewalk program. We still get calls every once in a while from people asking if we have funds in the sidewalk program. We haven't had those for a number of years, but again, there are quite a few sidewalks that do need improvement and that had been.
And sidewalks will qualify under Healthy Neighborhoods this year, so their neighborhood can get it done that way.
And then we've had a couple of historic district designations that the historic preservation commission have looked at. That's been a critical component of redevelopment, especially in the downtown and kind of evaluating that. Healthy Neighborhoods, again, is just in the budget for this FY twenty, kind of evaluated on an annual basis. And then other grant programs as they apply, we continue to look at CDBG owner occupied programs and other programs that are available. So, but those are all items that we continue to evaluate and see the need and the availability of funds for them. So that's kind of a real brief, quick run through. The Development Department, not a lot of changes there. Not a lot of asking in the CIP, but any questions on the development side of things?
I have, I have one on the nuisance inspections, Eric. And this is just, and maybe you've already done this, but with that increase in almost, almost a thousand, actually a thousand properties processed last year and the increase in abatements by the city. Do we have a habitual violator program where those fees would escalate?
We have, the second violation does double the administrative fee from a hundred to two hundred dollars. That was approved by council three or four years ago, I think.
It still doesn't look like it's enough. That's my only point.
Well, the habitual violators tend to be absentee landlords that it, it doesn't matter if you charge a thousand dollars. They're just going to sit there and it's going to make the tax or the property less viable for a future sale. We haven't seen that it's really impacted that much for those properties.
That's my only comment. That, that number jumped out. You guys are busy.
And part of that, I mean, through our I-works, we're able to better track. So not that our past numbers were inaccurate or anything, but we are more detailed in our tracking going forward too, so.
Yeah, really the, I think the largest factor on that, and Eric talked about it. We brought someone on to, as a full-time, full-time dedicated towards nuisances in the summer. And it, that's a direct impact there seeing that higher number. And the garages was two hundred of that?
Three hundred.
Three hundred of that, so that was one specific program right, right there that is about a third of that increase.
Okay, cool.
You good?
I'm good. Through Parks and Recreation now, a few different components on this end. We have the general fund operations and then some enterprise fund operations, so we'll run through those a little separately. Six different categories under parks include parks maintenance, forestry maintenance, park swimming pool, recreation activities, millennials golf course and the Recplex. So each of those has their own individual operating budget and we'll go through those. Some of the issues or items on the park side, staffing kind of remains an annual issue as far as being able to fill all the positions, especially the maintenance positions. Trying to retain some of those employees, but also having a lot of turnover. We have aging facilities and amenities in the park system. We've tried to address some of our shelters that I have in here, but also some of our playgrounds are aging. Some of our other facilities and sites have some wear and tear that need to be addressed. We'll get into the Recplex, but this is twentieth year for the Recplex as well. So some of those just general building functions, whether it be carpeting or some of those kitchen components are getting to be twenty years old. We've done some maintenance replacement, but that starts to pop up a little bit more. And then the enterprise operations, use of these facilities, trends in use. Look at the rec leagues at the Recplex and how that's changed over the last five or six years. Really a competition for families and individuals' time that we're competing with everyone else for those, that time that people have. Again, parks maintenance is sixteen oh one, forestry is sixteen oh two. We have ten to three seasonal employees in parks, two to four in forestry. Just an overview, thirteen park sites, two hundred acres of parks grounds that we maintain, mowing and trees and playgrounds and shelters and all that. Seventy-five hundred right-of-way trees and twenty-eight hundred park trees. So they have quite a bit that they maintain on a regular basis. The parks budget stays fairly stable, but some annual changes based on project needs, whether that's maintenance of facilities or playgrounds or sites. And EAB, I think last year I had the wrap up on that. That is complete in the parks and right-of-way. We do have a number designated trees in the park and right-of-way that are being treated on an annual basis. And the right-of-way, that's through the homeowners in the parks. Through the park system, we have the equipment to treat a handful of those trees. And again, last year, I think I mentioned Treekeeper Burlington Iowa, BurlingtonI.Treekeepersoftware.com shows an inventory of all the trees in our city system and park system and what type and size and condition those are. Some of the projects that we've had in the past, park shelter improvements, add new windows at Perkins Shelter, some tuck pointing and roof work at different parks. Funding for outdoor classroom, we recently received a grant for the outdoor classroom to get informational or educational signage on the backside of these signs that were placed this past year there in Crapo Park. Forestry had a busy year, a hundred and ninety-seven trees were removed in the past year, four hundred and fifty-seven stumps in twenty eighteen. So we are caught up with our stumps. That was a kind of a three or four-year project to get caught up with all the stumps that had been left after removing especially the ash trees. And then seven hundred plus trees were block pruned in twenty eighteen and planted a hundred and fifty-two trees. This past year, we did receive our Tree City USA award. This is the thirtieth year for that, for the city of Burlington, which is, I think we're one of the longest running Tree City USAs in the state of Iowa. And there's a few of our staff there receiving that. So they've done a good job with that. Some planned future projects, again Gladys, or Deedwin and Gladys White Park improvements. Hopefully we can get some bids back on that and get that constructed and finished out this year. Dankworth Playground, had some discussions with our Parks Advisory Committee and hopefully we can get something moving forward on that. And then followed up with the restroom a couple of years later. Pool upgrades, the bubble, that was on the agenda as a set date for hearing. It was on the last meeting as a set date for hearing as well. They didn't have all their plans fully in place. They're required to have engineered stamp plans for all their components and still working through that. But that will have an impact on the pool going forward. And that lease already has through the use of swim lessons by the Lacey. So seen some revenue down on that end, but also some costs down that we're not operating the swim lessons. And then just the normal drinking fountains, benches, trash cans. Unfortunately, we have some vandalism on a yearly basis that we're having to replace some of these amenities and some are aging out that we're having to upgrade them as well. Sixteen oh three is a swimming pool and sixteen oh four is recreation activities. Pool's kind of self-explanatory. The recreation activities is the summer camp that we operate at Perkins Park. We have fifteen to twenty pool, seasonal employees, four to six summer camp employees. Pool items, weather and school year dependent. It's really driven by that weather as well as the number of kids in the community. We're seeing schools shrink of school based on lower attendees, but that also affects some of our rec leagues and pool usage as well. If we have fewer people in the community or fewer kids, then obviously we're going to have fewer use at some of these facilities. This fall, they're, or this spring, they're planning on doing the concrete and work for the bubble and then hopefully follow that up with pools improvements. But that'll kind of have that impact on the pool. We'll see what impact that is as they operate and get going. They are operating swim lessons this past year and going forward as well. Perkins Park Summer Camp has been kind of in the last few years really grown, not only in number of attendees and revenue, but also just the quality of experience that we've heard from the kids and the parents for that summer camp. The last few years, we've had a waiting list of kids wanting to sign up for that. Generally thirty-five to forty-five attendees per week. If you see the revenue from FY fifteen is eighteen thousand, FY eighteen is thirty-one thousand. Most of that's directly related to the number of attendees that we have there. We're basically a full camp throughout the summer that we're turning people away for that.
I've received a lot of compliments on the summer camp from a lot of different people.
And a lot of that's due to the great staff that we have there and trying to have an engaging, fun adventure for the kids in the summer, so. Graver Bridge Race is a parks fundraiser this past year. Was the first kind of year that had that defined focus and then did some after-race promotions and event with that as well. Thought I had the exact numbers, but we had over five hundred registrants this past year. That included the bridge walk. I think the year prior it was, we're up, we're up over two hundred people over the registrants over the year before that, so.
Didn't you do the bridge run? Did you beat James?
I did not.
Let's, let's get her done this year, my friend.
He's fast. I can't beat him.
So that, that event's grown and helped support the parks and also get, raise some funds for those amenities. So some of the swimming pool reports, attendance kind of went up from twenty fourteen through twenty sixteen. We've seen a little downward trend the last couple of years. Part of that again, can be due to weather. If you see the attendance on a monthly basis in June, July and August, we generally have high attendance in June and then it goes down slightly in July and August. This past year, we had a higher August than we've had in the last five years. So it kind of depends on weather and what's going on. I think those free swim days might help even out some of that and have some impact on that. Revenues we see are down fourteen thousand over last year. A lot of that is the swimming lessons that we're no longer operating. So that's kind of a reset and see how things move forward from that point.
Do you have an idea of how many fewer season passes you have?
We have, I don't think I have that, but we have seen a decline in season passes the last couple of years.
We can't put a cause on that, but there is a correlation to when we increase significantly the number of free swim days. There's just fewer people who are signing up for the season passes. Again, we don't have a, we don't know that it's tied together, but there is some concern that there's just enough free swim days that it's caused some people to say, we'll just use the pool in those days.
Is there any correlation between the YMCA taking over the management of the West Burlington Pool and implementing their fees and schedules and activities to that decrease?
Not specifically that. I see we're just a totally different pool type than West Burlington or Font City. And we are a swimming pool versus a activity type pool. So operational budget, we have the four different categories, park maintenance. We can get five hundred and seventy-one thousand in FY twenty. They had five hundred and sixty-one thousand in FY nineteen. Forestry, three hundred and forty-eight thousand in FY twenty. That decreased mainly due to fewer contracts required for the ash board. We're kind of through dealing with that on a forestry standpoint. So that number's been brought down quite a bit there. The swimming pool, up a hundred and three thousand is the operating budget for FY twenty and recreation at ninety-one thousand. If you, overall, between the four categories, general fund categories here, the operating budget is forty-two hundred dollar increase over FY nineteen, which is a zero point three eight percent increase over FY nineteen in FY twenty. We see especially in the parks with the seasonal staffing, the parks maintenance, forestry operations, our actual numbers tend to come in lower. Part of that's based on staffing and being able to keep a full staff for the full season like we project. Oftentimes we aren't able to do that. Or project wise, depending on whether if we're not able to get out to all our projects, our actual amount has been less than our budget amount. As you see in the FY eighteen budget and actual, we're around forty thousand less in park maintenance. And recreation activities has increased in the last few years as we increase the number of kids. We're having to increase staffing and part of that increase is covered by increased revenue at the summer camp, but. But that has increased the last four years. The recreation activity is kind of unique. Brad Selby, the recreation manager, is partly fifty percent of his salary is paid out of that as a manager of the pool and overseeing those recreation activities. And then the other fifty percent is out of the golf course. Any questions on operating budgets? So that covers the general fund items and the parks side. Now under the enterprise funds, which is the golf course and the rec, recplex. In the CIP, generally through the golf course, so as we'll talk about it towards the end here, we have golf cars, batteries and mowers. We've extended the replacement in the last couple of years, still trying to push that a little bit more. But we're at an eight-year replacement for golf cars. Some will go to a nine or ten-year replacement based on pushing some CIP funds back. And then batteries, four to five-year replacement. Some of the trends we've seen, golf outings have been steady. We've lost two pretty large tournaments in the last couple, last year, over last year and added one. One being Steamboat Days, which had been a major tournament in the last fifteen, twenty years. And with how they've reorganized and changed, that one went away. So we did have two bigger ones that did go away, but we picked up one and still that's something we evaluate and try and pick up.
Seaboat Days went away, what was the other one?
I think the Hy-Vee.
They go somewhere else, huh?
I'm not sure, I'd have to check with Brad again if they went somewhere else or if they just didn't. Didn't do their tournament this year.
Okay.
Again, play weather dependent. Couple of years ago, we were open in February. Last year, we weren't there and I don't think we'll be there this year either, so. And then demographics of our players represented the community. As we look at our season pass holders, vast, vast majority of those are senior pass holders. But we're also a course that has weekend tournaments quite a bit. And so a lot of the players are those seniors that play throughout the week. Budget wise expenditures, fairly similar to last year as far as what we're budgeting. Revenue's down over last year. So as you see the, as far as just the operating balance, in FY eighteen, the actual operating balance was a six thousand dollar negative. Last year, budgeted it was a seventeen thousand dollar negative and this year, we're budgeting a twenty-six thousand dollar negative.
I would point out, we only are showing a fifteen thousand dollar transfer out of hotel motel to subsidize that. And we're.
How much?
Fifteen thousand, that's less than twenty-six thousand. So this is kind of optimistic that historically, some of your expenditure categories end up being a little less than what you've proposed. This might be a pressure thing that comes up as we move into the next few years. That, that if you're going to consider keeping the golf course as something that's a permanent fixture for the city, it's going to take more subsidy. So just keep that in mind as you think through other commitments.
If you look at the FY eighteen there on the left, is our actual amount of expenditures and revenues were down over what was budgeted, but the balance was pretty similar to what was projected there. So we'd like to see that balance be closer to zero or a positive. But just the last couple of years, that trend hasn't been there. Some of the golf course stats, I guess, in 2018, we had seventeen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four rounds played, which is slightly down over FY seventeen and sixteen, but fairly consistent over the six-year time period where it's in that seventeen to nineteen thousand round played amount. Season passes, we saw a big decline from 2013 to 2016, but then been fairly steady the last three years. What we look at, at the golf course is the quality of the course and the player experience. Trying to retain a lot of our customers that we have as well as bringing in new customers. But wanting to make sure that we're not deterring play at the golf course by the quality of the course. And I think it's been maintained very well over the last few years and hopefully we can continue that. Fees are examined annually to remain competitive in the area. Obviously, Spirit Hollow is a big one. Schaefer in Fort Madison, we look at those on an annual basis and try not to raise our rates to a point where we're driving them other places, but also trying to be competitive to what we're offering and what we're, what rates we have. Some of the couple of things that we are looking at, minimum requirements for weekend tournaments. Making sure we don't have small tournaments, especially on weekends that are clogging up the course and we're not having that play on the weekend for a very small tournament or having a minimum size depending on start time or things like that. So that's something that hopefully this year, we're evaluating this winter and being able to implement. Season league fees, there are a number of leagues that generally are pretty full at the rec, or at the golf course. But what are some different options to bring those up even more? Looking at season league fees versus the week-to-week pay there. And then high school golf fees, something that we've implemented especially for eighteen-hole tournaments that they have there. But evaluating that versus other communities. And we've had other schools outside the area ask whether they could use our course for practices and meets. And we do have a rate charged there, but just trying to be fair and comparable to other communities as well. But also realize, can't shut down the course for a high school meet and not have any revenue and have the staff there as well, so. Again, the trend, rounds and pass holders are slightly down, but over the five, last three years especially, been somewhat steady. One thing we're looking at, just trying to attract different users, we realized with our simulator that there's another amenity in town at Spirit Hollow that we're probably not going to be able to compete with. And what's the value of having that versus having to staff it and have the clubhouse open? Or what users are we targeting there? One minor thing, fling golf, this is something we saw at a recent Parks Conference. Maybe attracting a little different user, having a clubs on hand for a foursome. It's just a one club that you're able to pick up the ball and throw.
That's what I'm talking about.
So maybe you're not quite the golfer, but are there other opportunities out there that we can track different users out to the course? And talking to the reps at the conference, they play just like a normal foursome, play at same speed and time. It's just you're, have this unique club that you're throwing it instead of hitting it, so.
Sounds like my game.
I'll take it, I'm going to fling it off. I'm all about it, man, I'm all about it.
But it's, it's just a one club opportunity to hit, throw and putt with that same club. And might be something to, trying to track maybe younger or different users out to the course, so.
That'd be awesome. I would love to see you go out and play.
Dude, that would be awesome.
If we get you and Don out there and Jim and.
Don's down, man.
So in the recplex, again, recplex has the reputation as a very high-quality facility in the, in the region, in the Midwest. Some of the items that we've looked at addressing over the past and future are parking concessions and restrooms. Added to the parking on the west side, that's something we want to continue to expand. As far as the driveway there, some of the parking that'll happen this summer with the turf facility and those extension of the roadway. Recplex, we feel has a very positive impact on the community. Get into some of the numbers here as we go through. One of the primary issues is the league play, reduction in number of teams over the last number of years. We're looking at a considerable drop when you look at the five-year time period and just year over year, it continues to decline. Part of that's competition of time, as I mentioned, with other, other facilities in the greater region, but also parent involvement in youth sports. A lot of times, kids are more involved now than parents are, which has been a change in the last five, ten years. Limited leisure time, different options for time, some are less active with time and then just fewer young adult players. So we'll get into some of those details here. As far as the budget wise, operational, FY twenty, looking at a hundred and eight thousand dollar actual operating loss. I think there's some carryover that the transfer would be less than that, but that's what's being proposed. Last year was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand less. FY eighteen actual was twenty-eight thousand dollars. Revenue's less than expenditures.
When, a couple of things to note, FY eighteen actual had a twenty-eight thousand deficit. You were received, you, you had one major contract for advertising that was fifty thousand?
Yeah, it was about thirty to forty thousand more than usual.
So there was, they had some really significant increase in the, in their funding on that. That's a one-year blip that brought that deficit from the, what would have been a sixty to seventy thousand type figure down to that, what shows there at a thirty thousand. Regardless, as, and as you look at the FY twenty proposed, it, it shows a deficit of a hundred and eight thousand. We're, we're talking about transferring ninety thousand over. Again, he has some operational expenditures, he has categories that in order to make sure that you're budgeting for what could be being spent, he, they tend to spend a little underneath what they, they show for actual expenditure. So we're okay having, showing it not being, being a wash there between, between the transfer and what that deficit is. But we do need it to be close.
One of the items that's been consistently lower is the maintenance, seasonal staffing. That's been a very difficult area for them to get to their optimal staffing for maintenance, especially outside of the summertime when you have school, college or high school kids. You get beyond August and we're kind of shoestring along as far as maintenance and that's been an issue, but it does reduce some of that cost, but isn't optimal for our staff.
No, what he means by not optimal is you're having salaried employees who are supposed to be doing something else who are mowing. And I mean, it's, this is something that in the parks maintenance came, comes up too. Didn't mention it, but Ryan Gurley, you'll see out on a mower. And he's supposed to be supervising folks and field complaints from, from, from others. And he's not available to do those activities because he has to take care of the day-to-day stuff.
He's a great employee.
This is kind of a very bad trend, I guess. I don't know how to word it exactly, but league play out at the recplex has seen considerable decline in the last, from the first column there on the left is 2013, the orange column on the right is 2018. So we have slow pitch softball, volleyball and soccer. There are some other league play that doesn't have quite as many attendees that are included. But the total numbers in 2013, we had three hundred and fifty-two signed up teams through all the programs at the recplex. In 2018, we had two hundred and thirty-five teams in all the programs at the recplex. So a hundred and twenty fewer teams in a five-year period is quite significant, especially for revenue. When we're still having to mow, still having to maintain, we might have fewer concession or gate staff, but we still have to maintain the facility. Like last year, had these numbers up here as well, but for softball, it's estimated around a little over a thousand dollars per team in revenue generated. So every team that we, isn't signing up, that's a little over a thousand dollars estimated loss in revenue. Excuse me, so in 2013, we had a hundred and ten teams in softball. Last year, we had fifty-eight teams, so fifty fewer teams would be around fifty thousand dollars less in revenue just through that.
When did the Fort Madison one open?
That was, I think that was three, three years ago.
Yeah, so what is the, what do you think is the main driver for?
Well, kind of as I mentioned before, competition for time. We're just seeing, used to have players play longer, maybe in their forties and fifties. Now there's, we're seeing more younger players, players aren't staying in, in the leagues, especially softball along, for longer periods of time. Seen more parents when they have kids are getting out of activities themselves. Just whether that's fewer people in the community or just people that aren't active and aren't engaged in that type of activity any longer, whether it's video games or just being at home with family or not doing anything.
I would just think it would take a longer amount of time to see, you know, to see those type of decreases.
Soccer's been fairly steady this past year, was a little down over the last five years. And volleyball's a decline in about half from 2013 at sixty-five teams to 2018 at thirty-two teams. Volleyball is estimated around five hundred and fifty dollars loss per revenue and we've lost thirty teams over the last five years. So that's something, we continue to seek out teams, talk to teams on what we can do differently. But it's just, you have to have the people there and the willingness to want to do it. And it seems that's just not a, a big demand in the community right now. This kind of breaks it down a little bit differently, just the total number of teams. In 2018, fifty-eight, slow pitch softball. Over the last four years, we've averaged seventy-six. We did not have a fast pitch softball league this year. We had been averaging about ten teams. We did have a, I think a one-day tournament or a couple of, one-day tournaments for that to try and meet those needs, but did not have the league volleyball down about ten teams over the four-year average. Soccer's down a little bit, even though that's one of our highest teams, the youth soccer. Flag football has been steady, but have seen dramatic decline in the number of league teams. Admissions, just looking at the trends over the last three years. Last year was a little more steady over the year before where we lost, had a more dramatic drop in admission revenue. Last year was a little more steady concession as well. Smaller drop, it was a drop, but it less dramatic than FY sixteen to seventeen. And field rentals, we've seen go up over the last couple of years. Attendance, just looking at total number of attendees at the recplex, seventy-two thousand, slightly over 2017, but that is a pretty significant number of people that are going through at the recplex on an annual basis. When we look at other venues or facilities in the community, having seventy thousand people come through the doors of the recplex is pretty significant. Tournament info, thirty total tournaments in 2018, nine hundred and eighteen total teams. So that's up around a hundred teams over FY, or over 2017. Teams that are over one hour or more away, six hundred and thirty-five over five hundred and ninety-one that were last year. The direct local spending, this is kind of that formula, can kind of take it for what it is. But as far as how they factor that in hotel, food shopping and gas for, especially for teams that are one hour away. But that spending amount that's calculated based for economic info is five point eight million dollars in 2018 that were directly attributed to tournaments at the recplex, which is up quite a bit over 2017. This chart here at the bottom, kind of hard to see, but that just shows the number of tournament teams from 2004 on the left at three hundred and sixty-five teams to 2018 on the right at nine hundred and eighteen teams. So we have seen the dramatic decline in league teams, but we've seen a significant increase in tournament as well. So especially in the younger side, there's more teams in the area. We also have teams coming from quite far away. I know that a lot of that is from the monster match, but we've had some other select tournaments that had teams from Iowa, Illinois, Missouri, Kansas, Nebraska, Minnesota, Wisconsin, but then also Indiana, Kentucky, Delaware, Colorado and Nevada. So we are quite a draw for some of these teams that come into play at the recplex.
I've got a quick question. We, back when we elected to provide the funding for the indoor recplex, the partnership indicated that they were going to start the process of having their survey and going through and doing the study as to whether or not what we were doing was correct and needed to be changed. Have we gotten the results from that back yet?
So the, the chamber has contracted with the firm. They went through a review process and they hired someone in the spring to, to do a study, I think in June. And I think that was anticipated to be, anticipated, it's supposed to be about four months. They got results back and they were not really impressed with the results that they had. They have gone back and asked for them to redo that and put a little bit more attention into some of the things that they'd like to see out of that report. I, I haven't gotten a follow-up from that to whether, whether they've gotten something that they're satisfied with. But at this point, they haven't gotten a, a study back through that process that they feel is truly as valuable as. is truly as valuable as what they'd like.
It's basically about, they hired the wrong people.
That would be
One way to put it. Couple of things we are looking to do at the Recplex, um, again, just evaluating how we're generating revenue, uh, and what we're doing operationally. Looking at the gate split for weekend tournaments, uh, Kirk had been, uh, looking at that and seeing what other, uh, venues, uh, do at the gate, uh, for these weekend tournaments where there's a higher entry fee, uh, typically it's two dollars to get in, on weekends it can be five dollars or there might be a weekend pass or, uh, some different things, but uh, typically that'd have been a fifty fifty split and looking to go to a sixty forty split, uh, with the tournament organizer. Estimated that'd be about seventy five hundred dollar increase in revenue, uh, through that. And then the league admission, uh, having, um, uh, returning the token and seeing how that affects, uh, hopefully increases some, uh, concession revenue. We saw a very dramatic decrease in concession revenues when we took that away, um, but looking to do something a little different than the token, it'd be a still a one dollar return, but it'd be a, a slip, kind of sponsored where one half might be a coupon for a local business. And then the other half would be a, a dollar for use at concession or batting cages and that sponsor then would pay for the cost of printing all those and they'd expire on a yearly basis, so we'd know we're starting fresh or could get a new sponsor in the following year, so that's something we're looking to do and not having any cost in it, uh, through that sponsor and probably generating some money and then also not having someone bring in twenty tokens they've collected over three or four years and throwing them down and they'd have to use them that year and then, uh, start again the next year.
Eric, do we offer any kind of season pass? Would that be something that's worth looking into perhaps? Obviously, they would not, um, wouldn't get the token, but they would also not have a gate fee, they'd just be able to walk right through and maybe put something
I like that idea, it expedite things when those lines are long, you just show your thing and they'd punch it or whatever and
Maybe they'd get free batting cages so many times a year or something?
Uh, I would
Would that be something worth exploring, or are there others doing it?
We'd have to look at how it's working, if someone's out for soccer and then someone else's has soccer and softball, whether it be per event or how you operate that.
I, I think the token deal, I'd like to see us really look at that because I will tell you, as I played softball up until forty nine and I'm a lousy batter, and so when I would hit my token, I'd go put that in the batting cage or I'd go buy some in the concession stand. But when they lost the attendant at the front gate, I would no longer buy maybe three dollars worth of tokens or two dollars worth of tokens to hit a few times because, because it's so far away. So by not having that person there, that, I know I wasn't the only one that would do it, because you never just hit one token work, you, you think I'm gonna be better and hit two more.
I played league for four years and
Yeah.
I would bet that fifty percent of the time I showed up, there'd nobody, there'd nobody at the front gate, I mean, people were just walking, so.
Well, that's because they
Those are big issues
Took a, took a, took that position away.
That's several years ago, but
Yeah.
I don't know if it's still the case today or not.
So, I, I'd like, I'd like to look at bringing that back, because I think the other thing is, is with the concession token typically, you have the, if you have a token, you're, you're gonna buy a hot dog, you buy a beer, if you buy a, you know, or Pepsi or something, so.
Yeah, those would be good for concession or batting cages.
So, for implementing that, Eric, the, when we did away with the, the token process, that was a council-directed action. Is this something that you'd be looking for the council to provide a direction that they, of support or?
Yeah, we'd bring, plan to bring this forward in a resolution and kinda lay out the details and get approval.
Sounds good.
Yep, matter of work.
We still have the sign up, they used to say, token as you enter and it's kinda crossed off, so it, I, yeah, that's something that I think that, uh, could be supported.
Okay.
Uh, so into the CIP for the Parks Department, um, we have five thousand annually budget for trail maintenance, um, that's in FY twenty one through twenty four, we eliminated that, uh, in FY twenty, um, just, uh, try and fund, uh, some of the other critical items. Other FY twenty CIP items, uh, in the Parks Department, under equipment, uh, golf cars, uh, twenty one thousand, uh, this was reduced by half, um, over what was originally in the budget. Uh, remove the remaining funds to FY twenty one, um, uh, again, trying to balance that amount, uh, there, uh, a fair way more for fifty thousand, uh, greens rollers and an infield groomer at the Recplex. I think that would, the infield groomer especially, especially for weekend tournaments, something staff wise, uh, would help considerably to kinda speed up that process and make that a little easier. Uh, we do not have any parks equipment or forest equipment in FY twenty, uh, for the Parks Department. Improvement projects, um, we have Dinkworth Playground, uh, twenty five thousand in FY twenty from Starker Funds. The tennis courts, our Dinkworth Tennis Court, uh, looking to do the, uh, replace or upgrade of that, uh, which is, has a twenty five year warranty. It's a hundred and ninety five thousand using Starker and outside funds, uh, no direct, uh, sales tax or hotel motel funds there. And then a playground net at, uh, the Recplex, uh, twenty five hundred is the only other improvement project that's funded, uh, through the city. Just some notes on that, uh, based on what was originally submitted, uh, through the Parks Department, we moved a hundred and eighty thousand in funding, uh, from the original CIP, CIP request out of, uh, FY twenty, either completely out of the five year plan or back, um, from where we started. And then eliminated two hundred and twenty thousand in total funding from the original department request from the total five year CIP.
What were those projects?
I'd, I'd have to get into this a little bit more, uh, some of it was converting some city funds into Starker Funds for out years projects, um, I think it eliminated, uh, some of the minor stuff, uh, whether it be, or moving out some mowers or trucks, uh, out of the five year CIP. We reduced some of our Flint River Trail local match, uh, I think in FY twenty two, uh, down, I think it was fifty thousand or twenty five thousand, so, I, I can get that number, but there's probably twenty different change, twenty, thirty different changes that we made to get to the point we're at now.
Yeah, and even with that, uh, if you were to look at the pro- the, the list that Eric had put together the previous year to start with and look at what he has in this budget, it would be probably more like six to seven hundred thousand dollars worth of projects that were in last year's where he started originally last year and where we are now. And, and that's a function of both local option, sales tax and hotel motel being lower, uh, it's a function of we took a hundred thousand dollars of what would have gone towards his projects to saying that we wanna do the match on the engineering grant, uh, down on the, the, for the boat, the floating docks. It's taking, uh, money that would have gone towards other projects that out of, out of Starker and putting it into the, the tennis court and pushing those other projects back. And even, I mean, we began this year, I told Eric that, uh, his funding was gonna be about the, that he had towards these projects, so it's gonna be well over half a million less than what we had said last year and he had to cut that out, so he came in having already cut close to a half a million out of what they would have liked to have had before this extra two hundred and twenty thousand was cut, because we just, even with that wasn't enough to get to a balanced budget. We're not doing as much as we need to do within, uh, just for maintaining within our park system, and I, I don't know how to, to say that well enough, but we aren't, we're not doing enough, I think that like, you had Lake Starker renovation on here last year, it didn't even make the list for a proposal this year. It still needs done. We had a, we had a hundred thousand dollars request for doing the next phase of building storefronts downtown. It didn't make the, it didn't make the cut for even being presented this year. So it's, I, I don't know how to, there's, it's, it'd be pretty tough to talk about how much got cut out because there is, there's so much within our system that needs done that we're just, we don't bring because we know we can't fund it. When Travis talked about the ability to have a little bit more flexibility after fiscal twenty three, those are the kinds of things that you may be starting to think about some of those capital projects and, in, in what you bond for. But up until then, we are just really in a crimp for getting work done within our existing structure.
Can it wait till then?
I mean, what do you, what do you, I mean, yes and no, I mean, it has to, I mean, the one, the, the thing that you've put on that, in here that, uh, is really, that really is a crimp that was a, didn't need to have happen, was to look at the boat docks down, the floating, the floating boat docks on the, on the, on the riverfront, and yet, that's something that has so much other funding from outside, but you gotta know, there's a cost to it. One of the things that we've looked at internally, what, what we see on an operational basis, we've, we lot, we're, we don't have as much funding to do some of this stuff because we're supporting, uh, basic operations like at the Recplex. Well, one of the things that we'd had as a recommendation for trying to get that done was to charge a fee towards CESA, a large, a more significant fee than what they are to try to have that reflective of what they paid for use of facilities to what the college did. And, and you had a presentation from them that was very compelling and you made a decision not to do it, but there's a consequence. Those things mean that as we get to the next year's budget, there's less funding available for some of these other capital projects. So each of those, all of, we're, we're, we're not getting as much done, but we're doing as much as we can, we're trying to prioritize in the best order that we can. I don't, I don't know how to say it better than that.
And Jim, aren't, isn't the boat docks a time sensitive issue?
It, it is, I mean, if you're gonna do it, it's gonna be now.
I could just see the public going, well, the boat docks can wait, but, and I don't sure, they always understand.
It can and it can't, so.
Yeah, it was my understanding it was time sensitive, but we lost that money.
No, I, I don't wanna say that we're, we're, it's not like we're compromising any safety or anything, but we're not keeping our, I'd say that we're not keeping up our facilities as much as what we would prefer to be able to do. But we're okay with it, this is, we've tried, we're trying to balance out as much as we can for, for the fun, for the funding that we have.
Someone told me a creative idea today, they'd actually approached the city, teach us how to trim the trees in our neighborhood, someone came out from forestry, showed them how to do that, and then they went in their own neighborhoods and trimmed the trees, and I thought that was a really innovative idea.
It's very limited based on, and we have some people that are coming forward that have the ability, but it's not something we want people just, uh,
Okay.
take on themselves because they can be
A chainsaw, okay.
killing trees or damaging trees that then we have to remove a couple of years later, that's, and that's something we worked with the South Hill neighborhood on pretty specifically.
Yeah, I, I thought that was a great idea.
But there's, there's some limitations there, so.
Kudos to them for doing that.
Yeah. So as you see in our, uh, parks budget especially, uh, equipment is critical to our operation, so equipment is taking kind of the priority of, of funding, uh, but unfortunately, that means, uh, some of these projects, improvement projects or maintenance projects are getting, uh, left off the, off to the side. Future items, again, um, we're always, uh, having parks mowers, uh, we have a forestry dump truck in FY twenty one, golf cars and batteries, uh, mower reels and a Recplex Gator Utility. Uh, FY twenty two, another parks mower and Park UTV, uh, with the amount of parks that we maintain, there's essentially a mower every year, uh, different types for different, uh, components, we have hand mower routes, we have riding mower routes and, uh, so that, that's something that's, uh, looked at every year. Or it's a park or Recplex or, uh, golf course, um, that, those are just critical to those functions. One thing, uh, that we have in here is, uh, in FY twenty four, forestry bucket, uh, crane grapple truck, it's a, a combo unit, uh, something we'll certainly try and keep on as we move forward, it is a very uh, expensive item, it's, uh, I think it's three hundred thousand that we have budgeted for it, uh, we'd replace two existing, uh, uh, vehicles that, uh, if we bought them separately again, would be around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, but, uh, something that, uh, we'd like to see remain in the budget, they had a, a demo here, um, we'll probably try and show a video to council at some point, um, that they came down, it has a, a grapple on it that can reach up, uh, grab a tree and cut it by itself, uh, lower it down and put it into the, the chipper by itself, so they did a tree, uh, here that, uh, probably cut five hours and three staff, uh, people's time off, uh, of doing that tree that, especially as we're, uh, crunched with staff and time and, uh, efficiency, we're able to do more and, uh, uh, more safely and more efficiently with that, so that's something that we'll try and keep on here as well and, uh, probably present at some point. Uh, improvement projects, uh, Flint River Trail, trying to get that to completion, uh, did lower the local match, uh, since we're able to get, uh, additional distance here with our previous grants, but, um, that's one that we wanna see, uh, completed on Bluff Road to have that connection from downtown out, uh, to the, the county portion. Did add a few, uh, uh, pool items in the five year CIP, especially with the, the bubble, um, there'll be some components that, um, we need to maintain. Pool diving boards had been in the budget in the past, as simply as outside entity, they're getting to a point that they, uh, are gonna have to be replaced or there just aren't gonna be diving boards. They're still safe now, but, uh, we don't wanna have, uh, have them be to the point where we're told, you have to take them down and we have nothing to put back up. Some wet Recplex, uh, lighting and driveway extension, um, FY twenty two, the Dinkworth restroom, that's a, a Starker project, we originally had an FY twenty one. Moved that back here to try and get the tennis courts, uh, completed and, uh, kinda off our list for the next, uh, foreseeable future. Pool water heater, hot water heater, uh, another component there that with the year round operation, uh, some of the equipment that's normally used three months of the year is now twelve months a year and we wanna make sure we're in a place where, uh, we're able to continue to operate the pool on a reg- normal basis. Uh, West Avenue Trail Connection, that's a trail segment along Notre Dame, we'd applied for a grant, uh, last year and did not get it, it was in the budget this, for this current year. Uh, but did, did not get the grant, uh, we've reapplied and, uh, that would be in FY twenty three if we were awarded funds. Uh, some pool deck improvements, uh, around baby pool and concession area, and then Recplex field lighting, uh, as I mentioned, that's a twenty year old facility now, uh, we're looking to do a, a lighting project out there, uh, this would be for one field, um, something we'd like to continue, uh, each year after that, uh, but depending on funding availability, um, going to LED lights, which would hopefully reduce some of our operational costs, but also, uh, make them more efficient and, um, they are at that age that they're gonna have to be replaced and we'd rather have it replaced on our time schedule and not have them fail and have a tournament or something affected by that. Parks playground improvements, uh, we have some money in operations to, uh, replace some slides and stuff, but we do have a lot of playgrounds, uh, whether it's Anderson Heights, North Hill, South Hill, different areas that, uh, do need maintenance and upgrades and we need to plan for that. River buoys, uh, those talked about by the riverfront, uh, advisor committee, um, trying to schedule that after a lot of the riverfront work, uh, make sure they're placed in the proper location. Pool heater, uh, would be fifty percent cost from outside entity, uh, ideally that would be from the, uh, Lisi of the pool and then Recplex restroom concession. I think we have some city funds in here, but primarily Starker as well, uh, evaluating, I guess, the need and, uh, had that, uh, desire for something out on the, uh, northern side near the soccer fields. Uh, hopefully would increase, uh, some revenue through our, uh, concession, but also buy, provide a better restroom than the porta potties in that area of the field and trying to maintain that. It's an overview of our CIP items, uh, budget, uh, any questions on the parks, golf course, Recplex?
I have a question, on the bike trail maintenance, what does that mean? Does that mean they won't grade the trail, they won't pick up litter from the trail?
No, that's if we, uh, trail segment breaks or, uh, cracks and we have to repair it, we have funds there. Uh, in the past, we've had some flooding on the Flint River Trail, the bridge, and we've had, uh, uh, remove some logs and trees and we had no identified funding source, so, with some of the trail around the Recplex, it's getting to be aged as well, we've done some crack sealing there, but may have to have some replacement on sections, so that's what that would go towards.
But that basic debris control?
Not for, not for daily maintenance, this is for replacement or upgrades to the trail.
I get calls all the time, it goes, oh my gosh, there's so many branches or sand and, okay.
Yeah, that would just be a staff function.
Yeah, even out of, what he's been set and doing, I think he started two years ago, maybe three?
Yeah.
To set aside five thousand annually, and it's, right now, it's just building up in a, in a fund so that we have funds available to do s- some of these significant projects for the rehab of the existing, uh, trails. I mean, the, outside funds work for doing initial construction, but any major upgrades that need to be done to keep those trails usable need to be done to keep those trails usable is all, all on us, so that this is a source for that as we go on.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Tisdale? James, closing argument?
Uh, no, I think we're done for tonight. Public Works, you're up for tomorrow night? And Thursday then would be sort of a, a catch-all for starting to have a, do you, any reflections or any thoughts on things that you, are, are you okay with what you're seeing, or you want more information, or are you looking for any modifications? So.
Okay.
Tomorrow is at five o'clock, so.
Tomorrow's at five o'clock?
Five.
John's bringing a lunch roll. Thanks for mentioning that, and my neighbor, who has a crush on the assistant city manager, so make sure you wear something nice. Closing remarks before we leave, Mr. Tisdale? James, peanut butter?
No.
Counselor.
Hey, uh, this, uh, this weekend, Saturday, February second, South Hill Appreciation Banquet at the Burlington Gym, six o'clock, good food, good fellowship, and if you're a neighborhood in this town and you'd like to see how to start a neighborhood association, come down and check 'em out, they do it right, so.
Awesome, awesome.
They've got good numbers signed up too, so it's gonna be a happening event.
Are you guys going?
I'm going.
I've got a potential conflict with the basketball game, but I'm gonna try to go.
You want me RSVP for you?
I think I.
Sure.
You did.
Um, next couple of days, it's gonna be winter weather advisory, so if you know somebody that doesn't have a place to stay, there's gonna be a warming center down at Salvation Army Church, I believe, from eight AM to eight PM, and then Saint John's will also be opening up, I believe, at two PM.
Overnight.
Oh, I, from two PM, I believe, Thursday to, no, sorry, Wednesday, thank you, Wednesday, overnight up until Thursday, I'm not sure what time they'll, they'll be releasing, but make sure that if you're, if you're in the, if you're in the elements and you don't have a place to stay, find a place, and also, they are looking for blankets that you can deliver to Saint John's. You can call to Saint John's and talk to Father Marty, and he can give you some direction, or you can call down to Des Moines County, oh, Craig Fenton, I can't even.
Transitions.
Thank you, transitions, and, and he can give you some direction as well. They're looking for some help with food and those sort of things, so if you don't wanna do, if you wanna be a part of something and help somebody out, you have an opportunity over these next couple of days, so if you wanna do that. If you have something as well, if you have blankets that you don't know how to drop off and you want me to pick them up, call down to City Hall, ask for Kathleen and give her the information. I will personally come get your blankets, but I'm only getting blankets that don't need to be washed. If they need to be washed, we don't want those blankets. Mayor Proton?
No, that's it, thank you.
Counselor?
That's it.
All right. Thank you guys for your patience. Good night, everybody.